Okay, we're gonna call our meeting to order. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. We will begin with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Tagliaferro, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Arminio?
Here.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bierman?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Mr. Chiarella?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano? Mr. Nikotinsky?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Mr. Rutske?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum. Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, July 15, 2022, at all schools, on the district website at Monroe.k12 nj.us, published in the Home News Tribune, published in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clark of the municipality. Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of our minutes. We will begin with the Special Public Board of Education meeting on June 14th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. I oppose.
Okay. Ms. Arminio? Any abstentions? And any recusals?
I recuse.
Right. Ms. Ratner, recuses. Thank you. The next meeting minutes. The closed session meeting, June 14th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I do. I'm wondering if we could add to, this is the closed session, June 14th. We were in the closed session from 6:30, 8:00 p.m. to 9:11 p.m., and there are only four, excuse me, four statements on here. I'm wondering if we could at least tell the public how many candidates were interviewed that day? And add that to the minutes.
Sure. I believe we did, each time we had the interviews. I know one night we had three and one night we had two.
So on the-
And I know we did make, I believe we did make that public.
Fourteenth, how many did we have?
That was the night we had-
Two and three. Two and three.
Yes. We had two on the 14th, two interviews on the 14th.
So two candidates were interviewed on the 14th. I will be satisfied with at least that information. Thank you.
Okay, we amend those?
Yeah, so procedurally, this has been a motion made and seconded, right? So the way we would do the, the way we would honor the request is either a motion to amend or we can do it as a friendly amendment if the mover and the seconder would agree that the minutes reflect a total of five candidates being interviewed.
Okay.
I'm willing to do it either way, whichever is easiest.
If the mover and seconder agree, that's the easiest way to do it.
Yes. Agreed on the second, on the motion.
Commit the motion. Is that-
I made the motion.
Oh, okay. Would you be willing to amend that?
I seconded this motion.
I motioned, you seconded.
So what would I do now?
Would you be in agreement to amend it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we have exactly what the amendment is? Madam President, you can just have a vote on the minutes as amended with that one sentence.
Okay. But there was two candidates interviewed on that evening of June 14th. Yes.
I clarified that with the calendar. That's why I wanted to make sure we had the right information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. We don't need another motion, right? That's a minute. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Recusals?
Recuse.
Okay, Mrs. Ratner recuses. Then, we, next one is our Public Board of Education meeting, June 15th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any recusals? Abstention? Okay, those are approved. Our next item is the closed session meeting, June 15th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'm sorry, this is the closed session for June 15th?
Leave a motion, leave a second.
So moved.
Second?
Yes, second.
Ms. Bora? Okay, Ms. Bora, second. Any questions?
I rise to object to the, to the statement regarding Mr. Chiarella recusing him, excusing himself and then coming back. It was a different scenario. But I just want that on the record. I don't need to change anything. I just think-
Should we talk about what happened in the closed session then, if we're gonna? Because I'd like to explain exactly what happened and why I did that.
Okay. Well, that's up to the-
Can I make a point of order? I don't see that in these minutes at all about anything about Mr. Chiarella recusing himself at that meeting.
He excused himself and then-
I don't see it either.
I don't either.
I'm sorry.
It's not in the minutes at all.
On June 15th?
It's not, I don't see it here.
Well, this is the minutes I have. Are we talking about the-
Closed session.
Closed session.
The confidential meeting.
June 15th, is that correct?
Oh my God, this is at 2:00 in the morning.
Were they changed?
Well, that's redacted.
There's a redacted version, probably, but-
Okay.
I'm logging, I don't know why I'm getting the redacted version if I'm logging.
Yeah, why would there be a redacted version?
Because not everybody participates in the whole closed session.
Okay, I will rescind that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Recusal?
I'll just recuse for the last portion, which I was not present for.
Okay. Our next item is the Special Board of Education meeting on June 21st, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Once again, I would like to ask how many were interviewed on that date and be included in the meeting, in the minutes.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
And that was three?
Three, yes.
Three candidates.
Three were on schedule, three showed up.
Thank you.
Okay, so is, who?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Recusal? Ms. Ratner? Okay, and our last one, the closed session meeting, June 21st, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it, actually.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry. On that meeting as well, interviews for position of superintendent, how many candidates were?
That's the same as the 20-
That was the same one?
That's the same as the 20.
Okay.
It's two, they're both the same day.
Okay.
Because we had a, right, we had a closed session and then we also had the-
Oh, the other, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
All those in favor, again?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Recusal?
Recuse.
Okay, and that concludes our approval of our minutes. Our next item on the agenda are our committee reports.
I'd like to make a report.
Yes.
Even though there was no curriculum committee this month, I just want to report that that was for two reasons. One, Dr. Lehman did not have a lot. It would have been a 10-minute meeting. He was also away on vacation. So out of respect for him not being here, we didn't hold the meeting. And we are still deciding as to whether we'll have an August meeting or not. And it's my understanding that that has been precedent in the past where they don't have curriculum meetings during the summer. But he may have some reports. I believe Mr. Meraldo may have some summer reports for us. I know I saw him here earlier. But we may not have a meeting in August as well. We'll let you know as soon as Dr. Lehman comes back.
Great. Any other committee reports? Any chairs that want to give a report? Mr. Chiarella, BGNT?
Yeah, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to skip a couple of these because I think some things have changed, like the cafeteria trailer at the middle school and then the issue with the turf fields. So all that, the updates have changed. So we're gonna have, we'll have to have an update again at the next meeting for those things. But on July 12th, 2022, at approximately 8:00 p.m., we met and had a building, grounds, and transportation meeting here in this facility, in this room. Those present were Chrissy Skirby, who was board president, me, Adi Nikotinsky, Michelle Arminio, Gazala Bora, and of course, our acting superintendent, Ms. Chanley, Mr. Teig, and Mr. Lehman. So now I'll begin the report so that it's clear and transparent. We discussed annual integrated pest management program review. So the board, the committee heard about the integrated pest management plan, which is the same plan that we've been using for years. It's a, it's a great plan to mitigate chemical usage and things like that on our, in our facilities. And of course, if we, if there's pest mitigation that has to take place that needs the use of chemicals, then parents are made aware. And so all of those things are still in place. We had our annual review of the written IAQ plan. So the administration provided a copy and we went through to ensure that we, that we're in compliance with the PIAH indoor air quality standards. And I want to really, to express how well Mr. Teig did at informing us. And he gave us a ton of detail at this meeting. But the IAQ plan was one of the plans that everyone had a lot of questions about regarding, because of the, we no longer have the coordinators and things like that. So there were a lot of follow-up questions for that. So thank you, Mr. Teig. We also reviewed the partial replacement of the middle school HVAC equipment project bid. So the bid, the bid will be broken down into three parts. Part one is for the HVAC equipment. Part two is for the boilers. And then part three will be a combination of both. Administration indicated that funds designated for the project will likely only be able to handle the HVAC equipment. However, we will give the board an opportunity, this will give the board the opportunity to confirm costs and look at that further. And that's where we had some deliberation about prioritizing the need for a cafeteria at the middle school over our HVAC needs, which we think take precedence over, over the, over the cafeteria for now. So that's something that we're still working through, but more to come on that. We had an update to the stadium track and turf replacements. And we were, we, at that time, we thought there was a clog that would need some remediation and some work that could be, could have been costly. But it turns out that with further review, that's not an issue. So we're moving forward with that and that should not be a problem. And if there's anything in the future, I'm sure Mr. Teig will bring it to us and then we'll report it here. Annual snow removal contracts. So we're, the administration presented the bid. Results for the snowplow contract for, from 2020, recommended renewal for '22 and '23, which the board, the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee approved to bring forward to the board meeting. It's a, we've had, we've had, we've had a lot of good luck with them and they're not raising prices where everything is inflated these days. So they've done well in the past. So we're gonna stick, stick with them for now and hopefully the board will ratify that and approve it. And then we received the middle school parking lot design update. And we were looking, just looking at what we're gonna do with the, you know, with the parking lot and all those things. That's still fluid, so that's something that we're gonna have to look at again and then bring back to the, to the full board and to the community. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Chiarella? Okay, do we have another committee chair who want to give a report? Ms. Bierman for finance?
Yes, finance committee met on Monday, July 18th, 6:00 p.m. Monthly review of the attorney fees, May 2022, attorney invoices were $39,009. The Oprah category, $6,486 of that total. Committee members next reviewed the bill list. We had a bill list for $10,823,114. Finance chair conducted the standard oversight tasks. Any committee questions were addressed and the committee recommends approval accordingly. Subsequent to the committee meeting, you'll also see an addendum, which is in board action for approval for another $128,140, covering checks that needed to be issued through July 19th. Next up were the contracts for renewal. Committee reviewed all contracts for renewal, as we've been doing for the past few months. Educational software contracts were discussed at length. And we have requested we receive specific usage and activity data reports with the renewals so we can verify the district is utilizing each software robustly enough to justify the costs and continuation of each program. This month, the renewals for Turn It In in Edmonton were tabled pending a review of the usage to be provided at the next curriculum committee meeting and will come forward again for approval. And with the timing of the approval, they're due to the end of August, it'll be fine. Other contracts for renewal are on the board action agenda for July 20th tonight, full board meeting, and the committee recommends their approval. Last up was the update on the '22, '23 lease purchase. There was one bid and the committee recommends the approval. TD Equipment Financing, the interest rate at 2.7887%. This is for the lease purchase financing of vehicles and equipment. It's board action item M under the 10-member vote in the Acting Business Administrator's report. And that was for that $3,559,500. And that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I have a comment. I just want, I just wanted to recognize that Ms. Allen was at the, at our finance meeting.
Yes.
Did a wonderful job. But also that, as we know, she has been the backbone of our finance department for years. But it was nice to have an expert there who was, who had numbers and figures and facts.
Absolutely, all questions asked and answered.
Right. So thank you. And it's nice having you here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bierman? Okay, none? Any other committee reports? Yes.
I'm gonna do the report for community engagement. So we met on Tuesday, July 12th. We had discussed the district app. And the responsibility is under one of our newer staff members. Ms. Chanley also informed us that the district's now on Instagram. So we have another avenue to share some of the wonderful things that we're doing. And what's really good with Instagram is it's very image-based. So they'll get to see a lot of the things going on in the district. We discussed the use of a service such as HootSuite, which is a social media scheduler that you can put everything in on one platform and then it sends it out to all the different social media websites. And that way, it can help keep us very, you know, responsible and reliable. It's very reliable and we have everything that we need in order and we can just send it out right from there. Because, you know, the more avenues you can reach, the more people you can reach. Ms. Chanley also let us know that she had received an email address for each of the HOAs for our active adult communities. And we're gonna be using this information to reach out and discuss potential referendum discussions and other opportunities for involving the senior communities within our school district. And then the last thing that we had discussed was the possible use of a transportation tracking app and the benefits and concerns. And we also had discussed what some of the reasons might be why we should use it, but also safety concerns, you know, in terms of tracking students as well. Mrs. Chanley said she'd be reaching out to the director of transportation, as well as the new director of security and residency, to get their feedback on the potential use of the app and any safety and security concerns that may arise from using one.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Any other committees? Okay, Mr. Nikotinsky for personnel?
All right, so we had our personnel meeting July 18th, 7:00 p.m. We discussed our vacancy list, exit survey, administrative resignation, the new elementary principal, middle school assistant principal, the new director of security residency, the new part-time Oprah secretary, which is 25 hours a week. We reviewed the contract for the acting business administrator and the new contract for the new superintendent. The superintendent contract negotiated by the board president and vice president with Mrs. Chanley and attorneys for both sides. Contract was brought to personnel and the committee has decided to move forward for a voting, vote for tonight. The salaries starts at, for '22, '23, $200,000 plus $14,05 for longevity. '23, '24 is $204 plus $17,05 for longevity. And '24, '25 is $20880 plus $17,05 for longevity. And that's it.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Ms. Arminio?
Yes, thank you. The policy committee met on Tuesday, July 12th. We had quite a few policies to go through. We had some policies that would be abolished. When that happens, it is not the abol, that we don't precipitate the abolishment. We get the recommendation from our third-party law, our third-party law firm that suggests that the policy 2432, school-sponsored publications, is abolished, as well as the regulation 2432, school-sponsored publications, again, abolished. That is replaced, so I'm just gonna sort of skip around. That is replaced by a new mandated policy called student journalism. That's policy 5722. Okay? Then going back in order, policy, it's really a bylaw, 0143.2, is the high school student representative to the board of education. Previously, I believe we've only had soph, I'm sorry, juniors and seniors as our representatives. This is a new mandated bylaw and we had had discussions about whether it, this talks about the student representative shall serve for a one-year school term and their duties and then it enumerates their duties. We did have a discussion about whether the student can serve from junior to senior year. And have we reconciled that, Mrs. Chanley? This is, and part of the discussion was because it was a mandated policy, the discussion was whether we had to follow it verbatim.
Correct. So I spoke with counsel and it is, has been determined that the word "shall" means at least, to a certain extent. And therefore, if we feel appropriate, and I believe we all did, we all discussed that they have the experiences, that they would remain on the board for a longer period of time than one year. So I did get that information for you.
Thank you. So will that be determined in this, will that be determined for this evening? It'll be added to this policy or it is added to the policy already?
By leaving it as "shall" one year, you can just leave it as that. Because what it means is at least one year.
All right. And it also opens the student board representative from ninth to 12th. So anywhere between ninth and 12th, again, it's a "shall." So it, and it says, "as also determined by the superintendent or their designate." So there is, that'll be an ongoing discussion, it'll be determined before September. And it will be your choice.
Absolutely. And what we'll do is I will continue to work with Dr. Higgins, the principal of the high school, as he's done a great job, I know, because, you know, we had fantastic representatives here. So we'll continue to speak with him regarding what exactly is the format and the procedure and protocol to which we actually select the student board members.
Okay. I'd recommend to the public, because this is always something we should be familiar with, it's another bylaw, 0163, and that talks about a quorum. That talks about board members and mostly in this particular change, the revised language, they say "shall," "will" is removed, "shall," they talk about themselves instead of himself and herself. So there's really just some language word changes on this. And we pretty much went, kept with what was in the policy, except for the things that have been taken out based, again, on the recommendations from the law firm. Okay? The board of education website is the next one. This is a policy 1511. This is a mandated policy. And it's essentially web content accessibility guidelines that talks about the federal law and access from the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. So it combines the New Jersey law and the federal law. And we just want to guarantee a web access for our disability residents. Okay? Any questions on that one for anyone? Did you want to add to that, Ms. Chanley? Okay. The next one is every student succeeds. That's a revised policy 2415. And that's a Title I, so we have a, it's mandated. And Title I is where we get some grants. And we are going, we have a target assistance program. And one of the big changes, again, change of wording, it's parent and family engagement rather than parental involvement. So again, that's a mandated policy and the changes are basically language changes. Next one, those are, if we were going in order, those are the two abolished policies that I spoke of originally. The next one is policy 3216, dress and grooming. That has to do with, I had student journalism in the way. Dress and grooming, we sort of left that alone. That was for teaching staff. And the next one is support staff or vice versa. So those are recommendations about how our staff and teachers will dress in the school year. We believe that we have no problems with that. We have our teachers who are very respectful and professional. And we think we can, you know, have them just perform as they have been. So we appreciate that. Next one is professional responsibilities. And where are we with that? Okay. That is policy, and that's also for teaching staff members. And that is policy and regulation 3270. And I think that, again, is language changes and it talks about lesson plans and books. And our teachers have been doing such a good job, I think we don't have any problems with that one. The next one is, there are two. There's a policy and a regulation, and that's 5513. And that talks about care of school property. I think every parent should read this very carefully. It is a mandated policy. What we did do, Ms. Chanley, was remove, I think, one of the last. We talked about the board of education may withhold diplomas, transcripts, transfers, or report cards until fines have been paid. We did also talk about the ceremony and we were not really gonna make that many restrictions on ceremony. We would like our fines and paid, you know, by families. If there's, there are issues with that, they can talk to central office. All right? And I think lastly, what we discussed on the 12th is the school district issued student identification cards. I think, Ms. Chanley, if you don't mind talking about that, we've made some changes in what we were concerned about. Please.
So currently, we have identification cards that are not required to be worn, but are strongly encouraged in the middle school. It's very funny that in the middle school, they love to wear them where they're not really required. But in the high school, where they do require them to have them to utilize the bathroom and go into various different places, they're not as open and as comfortable as wearing them. But it is what it is. One of the requirements that has come down, that there needs to be, we're gonna call it a sticker because that's how we're going to speak directly with our company that does our portraits regarding suicide, suicide prevention, having an understanding that is a sticker that will be required on the, on the back. So that will not be a problem at all. That's something we'll be able to take care of with the company that we utilize. And there'll need to be one from 6 through 12. In the middle school, like I said, it's, we're fortunate that we do a lot of things in this district ahead of the requirement. So it's something that we've been doing regularly. And in the high school, it continues.
And finally, well, not quite finally. But the last two, policy and regulation, the use of school facilities was not discussed on July 12th. But I, we had previously discussed it and we came up with costs and values. So it is on for the first reading. We will discuss it again next month because we really didn't discuss the changes that we were waiting for to come down. So we'll put that on next month and we will just review it since it's on for a first reading. On the second reading, we are asking to approve the second reading policies. However, in light of some of our resolutions tonight, I would like to open up again for next month, I think very important, the school security, so policy 7440 and regulation 7440, school district security, and policy 8420, emergency evacuation, and regulation 8420, emergency and non-fire evacuation plan. I think it would be appropriate under the circumstances of hiring a new department head to review that with our new hiring. And the, again, H are abolished and we talked about that. So thank you very much. So thank you very much, if anyone has any questions.
I have a question, Michelle.
Yes.
So are you asking that we take that off as the second reading tonight, or that we bring that back to policy again for another?
Which one?
The security ones.
No, we can, we can keep it as is, so we have, we have an active policy, and because you can, we can always reevaluate policies.
Oh, absolutely. I just wanted to be clear.
No, absolutely.
What you were asking us to.
It's on as the second reading. I recommend that G, if this is the new agenda, that we, we approve G as it stands, and then we, we're going to bring that back to policy next month, along with the use of school facilities, and that's merely just to review it and make sure we're all in agreement.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Thank you, Mrs. Gervis. Mrs. Arminio, I had a few comments and questions.
Okay.
The first one was on the student representative, and I followed the discussion in the committee meeting, watching the video. I had an opinion I wanted to share here. We've done two years, and the policy says one year, and I understand that we want to keep doing what we're doing, because the policy technically allows for it, but I just wanted to bring up that we are a school of 2,300 children who all would like a leadership opportunity. Typically, high schools are not as large as ours, so more, you know, we would just be doing, providing more opportunities to other students if we kept it a one-year term, and that's my personal opinion. If others agree to it, I feel, we've been doing two years, but we can consider doing one year, that way, more students, more juniors and more seniors will get the opportunity to, to do this.
And, and the second, if I may, the second paragraph of that policy sort of says that, along with the student, the student body and the superintendent, that is a fluid discussion and would be determined by both, and so.
So it's just my opinion, and for you to take.
And, and the student body may feel exactly the same way, and I think that's a good idea. There, there was nothing that we, what we reiterated was, was our precedent, what we've done.
Yes, our precedent, right.
But that doesn't mean it can't change, and I'm sure that's a very good argument. Not really an argument, it's a suggestion. Thank you.
Yes, just a suggestion, right. The ADA compliance, I was wondering if we have gotten our website checked for ADA compliance yet? If, if there's a.
That would be. Actually, if I can just recall to memory, Dr. Lehman did speak on that.
Okay.
I, I do, I do recall him speaking on that. I can confirm that, but I do remember him saying that we are in compliance.
And, and the only reason I thought about it, because I, I'm in that line of work, and I know certain colors are not ADA compliant, so I wonder if our purple and gold is, and I hope it is, but I just wanted to know if you've done the test recently, and if our website is ADA compliant. So that was just a question, and I can double-check with Dr. Lehman later. The other two things, one was the, and I apologize, this is a second read, the final reading for the public records policy in today's agenda, but there was something that stood out to me about Oprah costs. There is, and I'm going to pull it so that I can read out a bit, this is policy 8310. There are two paragraphs that talk about how we can pass on the cost of doing Oprah to the citizen who has asked for it, if the costs are exorbitant, but there is no definition of what is exorbitant. So I feel, in light of current events, it would be, it would be worth a revisit if we could set some thresholds. A lot of this policy is on paper-based Oprah, which we don't do anymore. We, you know, we provide electronic records of, well, emails, mostly is emails, but it does talk very clearly that if it's excessive human labor, excessive infrastructure or technology, we can pass the cost on. So the, the policy does allow for us to pass the cost on, but it does not state at what point is it excessive. Is it one person making too many requests? Is it one person making too larger requests? So my question is, can we make that amendment or addition, and maybe this question is for Mr. Gagliardi, can we do that to the public records policy?
So, the short answer is yes, you can, but the longer answer is, it's, it's not as easy as you might think. In other words, it's not as easy as saying anything more than $1,000 we hereby deem excessive, because sometimes, as you point out, it's based upon the cost, and sometimes it's based upon, not necessarily at a pocket cost, but if you were to take an employee where you pay a salary, and they're tied up for 30 or 40 hours, you can try to recoup part of that cost. So the policy can be beefed up a little bit, but it will, you'll not be able to provide the tidy definition that I think you have in mind, but we're happy to look at it and perhaps with examples identify, so it's clearer to the public, as well as to the board, what would be considered excessive, but setting an hours or dollar limit is not as precise as you might think.
So I think what we would be looking for is, has any other district done something like that, where they've sort of set a threshold, or is it just based on, how do we decide it's time to pass on the cost to a taxpayer?
So, the, if you were to amend the policy, your guidance would be case law, right? You don't always have to pass it on if you can, you might want to. On the other hand, you may choose not to, depending on the nature of the request, right? So if it was a civic organization, a nonprofit civic organization, you might choose not to pass it on. If your policy gives you the right to pass it on, and it was a citizen who is making many frequent requests that are costly to the district, you may choose to pass it on. But we can have a policy that's more precise in terms of what's excessive, if you'd like us to work on that, we can do so.
Thank you. That, again, was a suggestion for future. And my last question, and it's really not.
May I, may I talk to that subject? Mr. Gagliardi, are we not constrained by the actual statute of the Open Public Records Act that discusses what is available to charge and what is not? Like, for instance, you mentioned that we don't use paper anymore. So we don't charge people for the electronic versions of our records. In terms, I think the only thing we might be talking about is excessive labor cost, which I believe that the statute does address, and again, you're the attorney.
Yes.
You can, you can explain that.
Well, you're correct, but the statute's guidance gives you the authority to recoup excessive costs. The statute doesn't define.
Right.
By, by dollar figure what it is. So as I understood, the question is, can we articulate a more precise definition for the benefit of the public and the board? And the short answer is, you can be more precise, but not as precise as you would like, since neither statute nor case law gives you a dollar figure. But you can have more than you have there, as far as describing excessive, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chivell?
Yeah, I just, I just have a question about why we have policies for the first reading coming before the board that weren't reviewed in policy. It doesn't make sense to me, it's not really transparent, and I think our public is owed us doing due diligence at the policy, at the, at the, at the committee level, and reviewing these policies before the board is voting on something that hasn't been discussed at the policy level, and now, next meeting, we'll have a second reading, and whatever we voted for tonight could be different from the final product, next meeting.
Well, if I may answer that, you're absolutely correct. It appeared on the agenda without my knowledge.
Which one was what?
So, 4, 5, 7, 5, 1, 0. But we had discussed it in the past, it was sent to, I think we sent it to Buildings and Grounds, and then we sent it to Finance.
I think it came to Finance first, and we sent it to.
Building and Grounds, and then it appeared, but it was not anything I was aware of until I got the agenda. That's not to say it can't be on here, I'm just, I agree with you.
Right, so even though, and I understand, if it came, if, it going to Finance, right, so if it was sent to Finance, then Buildings and Grounds, but now it's on the, for the first reading, we, we don't know what the changes were, or what's in there, based upon what went to Finance, what went to be changed.
I agree, I was trying to be kind and just.
I think we should, I think it should be tabled until it's reviewed.
Okay, that's fine with me. Yeah, it didn't, it did not, it did not appear on my bequest.
Thank you.
Ms. Melcham?
I had a question, I had a comment on Gazala's point before, which I thought she's still at the floor, but the, the Oprah paper piece, I just want to make a point, yes, we talk about charging for paper and for pages, because paper is very expensive, especially if you're not going to a print shop and you're using a copy machine, and the current rate of her copies on a copy machine is about 47 cents a page, and that's one side of printing. But there are costs involved in electronic.
Yes.
Research, there's electronic servers, we have to keep these things on the servers, we have to pay for storage, so it's not, you know, just because it's electronic doesn't mean there's not a cost to it. So I think that that's something that is a misnomer for people, and I just want to make sure, but when this does go back to committee, this is stuff that is thought about, because those things we do pay for, and, you know, we, that's why we have an entire, you know, IT department. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Ms. Bora, did you have another question?
I had, sorry, I wasn't done, I had one more thing, Mrs. Arminio. There was a lengthy, lengthy discussion on the quorum policy, and there were some back-and-forth on board members being conflicted. So I had a question, if I could ask Mr. Gagliardi that, that's for my understanding as a board member. What I understood from that conversation that night is that the onus of understanding my conflict is on me, and I can take counsel from the board attorney, but if I don't do anything, and I continue about my business, I could be conflicted and still continue on with my actions. Did I understand this right? Like, I, if I choose not to take counsel from you, and I still go about, I could continue to do something that I'm conflicted in?
Yeah, if the question is not raised.
If the question is not raised.
That's correct. I mean, a, a board member could raise it, the board president could raise it.
Okay.
But it is, it is correct for you to assume that the ultimate responsibility is yours. In other words, no one here is going to say, wait a second, you can't vote on that, because, you know, you have a, a child who works for the district or something, that's, you're not, a defense is not, well, nobody else told me, I couldn't do this. I think that's your point.
That cannot be my defense ever, that nobody else told me.
That is correct.
But if, in the event, you kind of gave me the segue to the next question, if in the event, somebody pointed out, you may be conflicted, I can choose to ignore that, and go ahead and keep doing what I'm doing. The onus, what my question is, the onus is essentially on me.
That's correct. If someone, if, if another board member would say, I don't think you can vote on it, and you say, well, I think I can, and you go ahead and vote on it, the fact that it was brought to your attention would probably be used to enhance a penalty if someone filed ethics charges against you, but that's about as significant as someone else making that statement would be. If you got an opinion from the board attorney that you shouldn't vote, and you went ahead and voted on it, I think that the consequences would be far more serious.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Melcham.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any other reports, correct? Our next item on the agenda is our public forum, for our agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes.
Maddie Raback, 23 Riviera Drive. I have a question for Ms. Chanley. You said on the back of the identification, you used the word "suicide." Can you elaborate on that? Like, what is that all about? When you were talking about the identification, I don't understand what that meant.
Is, we're, is that your only question? Because what we've been trying to do for the last few meetings is.
Oh, I thought that, because it was discussed.
Have all of the questions up front, and then, at the end, we'll answer them all.
Okay, thank you.
No, 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 is that your, is that the only question you have?
Oh, yeah, that's my only question.
Oh, okay, yes, Mrs. Chanley?
So a lot of our policies, as Ms. Arminio described, through a third-party Strauss estimate, provides with what's mandatory, what needs to be abolished, language changes, so now it is mandatory. I think that we're seeing a, an uptick, I wish I could find a more sensitive word, concerns with, with children, and, and having issues with emotions and sensitivity, you know, I think a lot of it has to probably do with what went on, with, you know, not being part of society, when we shut down for COVID, and now, I think we want to have that hot, I think, it is my understanding that the mandatory requirement is so that if, I'm going to say God forbid, I don't know if I can say God forbid, but I'm going to say God forbid anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so if, God forbid, there was something wrong, a child would have an immediate opportunity to reach out.
In other words, there's a phone number and a reach out.
Correct.
Oh, thank you, that's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Thank you. And it, and that is a mandated policy. Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Hans, 712A Sussex Way in Rossmore. I know I've, I've spoken before in public forums here, and again, once more, I just want to make sure that it's understood why I've been coming to Board of Education meetings. I have no skin in this game. I'm not a teacher, I'm not a former teacher, I have no students in the school system, no children, grandchildren. I am simply a resident of a senior community who's very interested in making sure that the education, the public education is provided to the residents, to the children in Monroe Township, is that which is ethical and appropriate, and that our tax dollars are used wisely. I have no other skin in the game, I'm not friends with anybody here, I'm not friends with anybody in the audience either. I'm just simply an interested, independently-minded citizen, who frankly has at least the benefit of having lived many of her married years in East Brunswick Township, where we had an excellent school system, and frankly, we never had most of the controversies that I've been seeing happening here in Monroe Township. I just want to go on record, I see that you have an agenda item, Board Action, AD, I wanted to go on, on, on record as, as being in opposition to that. I feel that this board failed to follow through on having a transparent process for selecting a superintendent of our schools, okay, and one that included public forum. And the reason it didn't include public forum is, I know I attended at least two meetings where the public forum was scheduled after very lengthy closed sessions. I was here by myself one night at 10 o'clock at night, waiting for the public forum. So I don't feel that there was much opportunity for public forum or public input. I've never seen the results of the survey results, although I did go on record on one of my prior statements, and saying, this is at least what I responded in the survey, but I have no idea if those survey results were even considered in your decision-making. I have nothing against the current Assistant Superintendent, I don't know her well enough. My issue is with the process by which this board came to that decision to make that recommendation this evening. I do not believe that it was impartial, nor do I believe that it was transparent. Speaking to the attorney in place here, just with this prior discussion, I also had, in my prior experience, a gazillion years ago, I was actually friendly with the Edison Township, with the then Edison Township Board of Education attorney. He made sure that his guidance was always in the best interest of the Board of Education and the Edison Township residents, and that they were always advised, even if they didn't ask, they were always advised that there might be a potential conflict in anything that they're saying. And I feel that this board has not been fully advised how their actions are coming across as not being in the best interest, okay? They're not transparent, you haven't asked for the public forum input, and you're not coming across as having made an independent, informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Excuse me, it's a long way from there to here. I'm Linda Wazowski, I live at 388A Orington Lane in the Rossmore community here in Monroe. I just made a couple of notes over the last couple of days, because I was on the BOE website, looking for the superintendent's search updates on the website, and the most recent ones that I saw were dated in May. I don't understand that, because my understanding was that the Office of OFAA, I think is the acronym, I'm not certain, excuse me, was that the corrective action plan was supposed to be published, and I have not seen it published, so I'd be interested in hearing what it is, and seeing it published, and as well as other items related to the search being publicly noticed on the district's website. Making Instagram pages and other such social media pages, doesn't work for everyone, I don't do Instagram, whatever. Second comment is related, I, I agree with Liz, that AD is inappropriate at this time for the reasons that she stated, and for the reasons that I stated to each of you in a letter that I sent to each of you this morning around 10 after 10, saying that I opposed, that once again, I was directing the letter to Mr. Anderson at the County Superintendent's Office, urging that, that tonight's decision, which at that, when I got the agenda yesterday, was not part of the agenda, but was added this morning, that this decision be deferred until such time as the, the verdict of the courts, as defined in the Lillian Isaacs versus BOE, was, was passed the stay period, and the determination could be made regarding ethics decisions and other such issues. My other question, though, is, and those were comments. My other question, though, is, and those were comments, I realize those were not questions. My other quest, my question is, and I do not know Ms. Allen, I've never met her before, I didn't know she was Ms. Allen until she came in tonight, we are appointing her to some unnamed position here at a salary that ends up being $235,648. What is the position or title? Why are we appointing her to a 24-month position? As what? And most particularly, why is this salary, including an extra $7,500 a month, for what? And does this position that she is going to be taking on, if you vote in favor, include Business Administrator and Board Secretary? What is it? Thank you.
Thank you. So, the position is not an untitled position, it is Acting Business Administrator. It is a one-year contract that has been previously approved by the County Superintendent. The extra $7,500 was brought to the Personnel Committee for discussion, and that is because Ms. Allen has been working both her Assistant Business Administrator position, as well as her Acting Business Administrator position. And the workload has increased significantly, and it got brought to the Personnel Committee, who accepted it and brought it forth tonight for a vote of the board, to approve that, to compensate her for the work that she has been doing. It is a one-year contract, not a 24-month contract.
All right, may I clarify one point, then?
Sure.
To what you're saying, Mrs. Kirby? So she will not be functioning as the Board Secretary?
No, that is correct. Mrs. Tagliafara is the Acting Board Secretary.
Okay. And may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Since I have 43 seconds. Are we ever going to be told why Mr. Gorski is on suspension?
At such time that we can discuss that personnel issue, we will. We're not at liberty right now to discuss that, as it is an ongoing personnel issue.
Okay. And why is nothing on the BOE website?
We do have a section on there, we were updating that. The updates were, up until that point, it was the updates of where we were in the process. And then, once we had the interviews, this is where we are, there was no update. The update is where, tonight, the contract that we are presenting for approval. We couldn't put who?
I understand that.
Or, you know, there's very limited information that we were told by New Jersey School Boards, who was guiding us in this, that we were allowed to share during the process. We did, however, in my opinion, and I know a lot of us on the board feel the same way, that we were extremely transparent in the position. In posting the position, we did an external search, we engaged New Jersey School Boards to assist us with that, we did a community survey, and yes, we did, and I did report that at several meetings, and in the letter that I sent to the County Superintendent with an update that I know is posted out there as well, we used the survey results to develop all of the questions that we asked the candidates. So yes, we did use that survey. I believe now that the process is closed, we can make that open to the public, the survey results. But until we concluded the process, it was advised to us not to share that, because we developed our questions from that. And putting that out there publicly to candidates interviewing at the time would give them an unfair advantage to see the questions that we were going to be asking them. So that is why we were advised by New Jersey School Boards to keep that confidential until the process was over.
Okay, well, the only thing relative to the closing of interview opportunity was the date listing of future events, and nothing in between. So I was quite disappointed. I mean, I wouldn't have, I shouldn't have to go to Instagram, or Facebook, or someplace else to get information about what my, what my school board is doing. So, thank you.
Madam President, if I may, just add one more thing.
Yes, Mr. Tagliari.
In the spirit of being more proactive, as suggested. So, the only other aspect of the chronology that you provided, that I think is relevant to the public, is that through the Personnel Committee, and then the direction given to the President and Vice President to negotiate a contract, there was nothing that the board could reveal publicly until the candidate found the terms acceptable, and the County Superintendent deemed the terms acceptable, which did not occur until yesterday. So in terms of when things were made public, when things were presented on the agenda, lest there be given undue thought about intrigue and nefarious motivation, there was nothing that could be articulated publicly until the approval was received from the county office. That took place yesterday, and so that's why, to the comment made, the item did not appear on the agenda until then, because until the county office approved it, there was nothing on which the board could lawfully act. So, I just wanted to add that to the chronology, because it's a critical component as to what was going on before it was made public. And it was the negotiations, and then the presentation to the county office, and then there was the approval from the county office, which was received yesterday. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, and just one more thing to add. I know you had asked about the corrective action plan. That is going to be presented tonight. So we presented at the last board meeting, the report that was issued from that office. Then, the board was tasked with coming up with a corrective action plan, that was shared with the board members, and our board attorney later on in the meeting will be going through that, and then that will be posted. We have to send that with a resolution back to that office, and then that will all be posted onto our website. So we are actively ensuring that we are in compliance with what the state has asked us to do. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Gail DePaine, 356 Old Nassau Road. I wanted to know, first of all, I ditto what Lyndon and Liz just said, who was on the committee that interviewed the candidates that the School Boards Association brought forward to you? Can I ask that?
You can, but like I said, we're trying to get all the questions up front and then answer them, so do you have multiple questions?
I have another question, yeah. And it goes to page 5 out of 40. Your custodial maintenance, you have 69 people. Have you ever had a consultant come in and evaluate the custodial system in this district? This is a very vast, wide, and a huge district. Is it sufficient for the district to have just 69 people on your custodial maintenance? And I wanted to know also, too, is there a lot of overtime? If somebody's out sick or vacation, what happens there, and maybe the cost? And do you have a pool also of subs for these different positions? I think you should have it checked out. I don't know how much a consultant would be, would give some people some more jobs in the town if they come in and tell you, well, you need 80, 85 people to rightfully supervise this entire district. Because somebody could be here and there, and if you don't have constant and good information back and forth, then something, somebody, one of the custodians could be hurt. You don't know. So I'm just curious about, you know, about your maintenance people. That's the other question.
Okay. For the first question that you had asked, who interviewed the candidates for Superintendent? The interviews took place by the eight non-conflicted board members, myself, Mrs. Beerman, Mr. Rutske, Mrs. Belko, Ms. Arminio, Ms. Bora, Mr. Shirella, and Mr. Nikotinsky.
No people, no teachers, no administrators, no citizens, no residents from the town? Anybody that had a vested interest in this town?
No, at the recommendation of New Jersey School Boards, we were recommended not to bring anybody else into the interviews, that it should be the board members themselves for confidentiality purposes.
Okay, that's not how it was when I was a board member, but it's been a while, and we did things a lot differently then. Okay.
Well, like I said, we hired New Jersey School Boards to advise us.
No, I understand.
And that is, you know, and that's part of the issue. Boards do do things differently, how they see fit. We hired, we used taxpayer money to hire them and come in and advise us appropriate procedures. And to not follow that really would have not been a good use of our money. If we're bringing somebody in to advise us of the best practices, and then we don't follow them, it's really a waste of bringing them in.
I totally agree, because we used school boards before, too. We're in the district I was in, and they're wonderful, very helpful, very knowledgeable. Thank you.
And then, as far as the custodial staff, Mrs. Chanley, if you want to comment, we have Mr. Take here, who heads Facilities, if he wants to comment on that.
If there's anything that you'd like to add, Mr. Take, when I'm finished, please feel comfortable to come up to the microphone. So we are very fortunate, we have a Director of Facilities, and I'm going to say either 34 or 36 years. 32. 32 years in our district, and he has grown with the community, which I think is, to your point, about utilization and making sure that we're efficient, we're expedient. He is able to evaluate the needs of all of the school buildings within the parameters of spending the taxpayers' money on additional employment for other positions. I do know from being a principal, we do have, I'll use the word pool, if I may, a pool of substitutes. We do have substitutes that come in. We do not have substitutes that come in, so when you need, but we've had subs in the, like, the middle school, when you have people that are out on leave, or that that just come into work for that short period of time. Did you want to speak, please speak specifically? Because I think that his handle, I'm not to say that we couldn't use an outside source, but I think he's our best source. You could elaborate.
Sure. Madam, I thank you for recognizing our staff. We have a staff of approximately 70 people who take care of over a million square feet of building space. I'm very proud of them, I've worked with them for over 30 years. Many of them are the parents and grandparents of the students in these schools, and they take their jobs very seriously, and I'm very proud of the work they do. With regards to how many people we have, the State Department of Education actually sets a standard of square footage per person that they designate. So when you look at a building, you essentially divide the square feet by the state model, and we look to stay within that state model. As to the substitute piece that Ms. Chanley mentioned, what we did there is, we did have substitutes many years ago. It was challenging to get these people to respond on a regular basis. So what we did is, we implemented a plan where we have two full-time, what we call floaters. So as you can imagine, out of those 70 people, there's always somebody who is taking a vacation day, out sick, et cetera. These full-time floaters allow us to put a person in to cover for them during their absence, and that person is paid at straight time, rather than we'd be paying time and a half in overtime for individuals to cover these areas. So, although I would welcome additional staff, because our staff work extremely hard, if the board so decides to add staff, we would welcome more individuals in the Facilities Department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Take. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Tim Esso, Tim Esso, Two Allison Court. I understand that people are coming up here questioning the process on Ms. Chanley. I'm kind of curious to know if those same people have checked on the other precedent on how others were hired, okay? It sounds like all the people up here have done and went through the proper challenge to the state and to see Ms. Chanley gain her position. So I think before people start throwing stones at someone who's worked her way up the ranks, and rightfully so, should have the position, possibly they should look at past precedents on how others were hired in that position as well. I also want to make a point about Mr. Gorski. One of the members in the audience has stated, you know, we want to know why Mr. Gorski's not in his position. About six months ago, I came up here and I sort of gave a very good reason, and I'm not going to tell you what I said, but you can go back to the meeting, it was within the last six months, I believe, why Mr. Gorski probably is not in his position anymore. And I'm sure there's other reasons as well, but sometimes change is good. I mean, we have a new board up here that's, I see, doing the right thing by our students. We have people in this audience who continue to come up here and destroy and try to beat this board up constantly, bring their minions, okay, and tell them to say what they have to say. And it's a shame, it's impeding the progress of our kids. And my children are out of school. I don't have to be up here, but I tell you what, I love kids. And what's going on right now in this audience is disgusting. It's impeding the progress of what we should really be doing, that's focusing on our children. And this board is in the right direction. And don't let bad vibes, or I'm going to say, bad people, okay, impede what you're trying to do, and that's what's doing the best for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Aziz, 3 Launcelot Drive. I'm here to speak about the contract that's on the agenda. The board purposely suppressed community turnout to today's meeting by waiting until eight hours before the meeting to update the public agenda to include the resolution to approve Sherri Shanley as permanent Superintendent. Not only do they violate the Open Public Meetings Act, which required 48 hours' notice be given, this was purposely done to deceive the voters and the community. I believe a number of board members here have conflicts of interest, and if these board members vote on Sherri Shanley's contract tonight, again, anyway, they will subject themselves to ethics charges. On Monday, the Honorable Judge Michael Toto of the Middlesex County Superior Court denied the board's motion to dismiss the lawsuit against the board, which seeks to invalidate Ms. Chanley's contract extension, on the grounds that multiple board members have conflicts of interest and should have recused themselves from the vote. The judge denied this motion to dismiss after reviewing significant evidence that board members have conflicts of interest. Under these circumstances, tonight's vote on Sherri Shanley's contract will put our district in legal jeopardy. It will cost taxpayers more money in legal fees for a vote that will eventually be overturned by the court, knowingly voting conflicted at this point would be a defiance of the law and put us at legal risk. Also, I want to address the issue of the superintendent survey. According to New Jersey School Boards Association, they have an article called Do's and Don'ts of Surveys. And one of their do's is that a survey should be publicized in advance before its launch. This survey was not publicized. The New Jersey School Boards also recommends that the survey have seven to eight questions. Our survey had one, two questions. Also, the New Jersey School Boards Association, according to their website, said that the survey results should be summarized and presented to the public. Furthermore, the New Jersey School Boards offers an array of services related to the superintendent's search. This board chose the most limited services. In other words, it just asked the New Jersey School Board, according to the contract, to present the board with a pool of candidates. Their involvement ended on May 19th. Other districts hire New Jersey School Boards for a more extensive array of services, including their involvement in the interview process. The New Jersey School Board was not involved in the interview process at all. And so, I just want to make it clear that other districts do publicize survey results, they advertise the survey far in advance, they give people plenty of time to complete the survey, they include many questions, and these results are summarized and presented in a very transparent fashion, and that was not done here. Also, I want to know why our school's security officials are not here. It seems like the board may have hired outside police to provide security, and if that's the case, I want to know how much that's costing taxpayers. Will I have answers to my questions?
Are you finished?
Yes.
And you have no other questions? So that's your one question?
Not at the time.
Okay. Mrs. Chanley, would you like to explain the security?
I'd be happy to. I'll just be cautious in what I say to be respectful to the individual. We had an individual give notice, Director of Security gave notice, walked out the door, and at that time, we immediately posted the job. We are, I'm very excited, which will be part of the superintendent's report, to discuss the person who will be voted on this evening. And other than that, the way it works is, we only have one 12-month Director of Security, which has been longstanding prior to me being the Acting Superintendent, has been protocol with all previous superintendents. And what that means is, the other employees are what we call at-will, which means we reach out to them and we say, would you like to come in and work the board meeting? And if the answer is no, then we go, and we utilize our memorandum of agreement, and we reach out to our Monroe Township Police Department. So that is the situation that we are currently in.
How much is that costing?
I'd be happy to write down that question. If you'd like to send me an email, I'd be happy to provide you with that answer.
All right, so you don't know up ahead how much it's costing?
Absolutely not. Sorry, that's not one of the things, that's just in automatic recall. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Tagliari, would you like to comment on what she had said previously about the...
The litigation?
Yes.
Okay, certainly. I have the disadvantage of actually having been involved in the litigation, so I'm happily to provide the facts of what happened. So, approximately two months ago, as you know, the board voted at a meeting to extend the contract of the Acting Superintendent and to suspend an employee. A member of the community, Lillian Isaacs, filed two lawsuits, one to ask the court to invalidate the contract extension of the Acting Superintendent, and the second to invalidate the suspension of the employee that was acted upon in the same meeting. We filed opposition to the applications and said that it was the wrong relief being sought in the wrong forum, because the allegations that the contract was improper and the suspension was improper were limited to allegations that board members acted through a conflict of interest, and we said the proper forum for that was the School Ethics Commission. That, those motions, the motions that they made for the relief that I described, and our motion... our motion to dismiss the case, were all argued virtually before Judge Toto, who's the assignment judge for Middlesex County, on Friday. He said at the conclusion of the argument, which lasted a little less than an hour, that he would take it under advisement and issue an opinion this week. He issued his opinion yesterday. As I said, there were two cases. There was an error where his written opinion for one case was appended to the order in the other case, so although they issued them on Monday, they were corrected, and both orders and opinions were actually released yesterday. The request made by the plaintiff that the extended contract of the acting superintendent be invalidated was denied. The request to rescind the suspension of the employee was denied. Our application that the entire set of claims be dismissed was denied without prejudice, meaning we could renew it, and the whole case was, the plaintiff was advised that the cases belonged before the Commissioner of Education and/or the School Ethics Commission. Yesterday, the attorney for the plaintiff wrote a letter to the Commissioner of Education asking, forwarding only their papers, not ours, saying, "Here's the whole case. The judge says it belongs before you. Please issue a ruling that should, that would prevent the Board of Education from appointing Mrs. Shanley as superintendent of schools at its board meeting." We filed a letter today explaining why, both substantively and procedurally, that was completely improper and no such relief should be provided. No such relief was provided. In the meantime, as I mentioned yesterday, the Commissioner of Education's representative in Middlesex County, the acting county superintendent, said that the contract could be acted upon by the board this evening. It was proper, so it's on the agenda for tonight. So I do not know what the plaintiffs will do, if they will figure out how to properly get certain ethics issues heard by the School Ethics Commission, but I think that the application is incredibly flawed, both procedurally and substantively. So without any order from the court or the commissioner, there's no impediment for the board, from the board acting this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gagliardi.
Well, I think, I know that there was one ethics complaint filed last year alleging a conflict of interest that was referred to the Office of Administrative Law in July of last year, because the School Ethics Commission determined that there was probable cause. And that case is being investigated by the Office of Administrative Law, which means that there was probable cause. And that evidence, I imagine, was submitted to the judge, which is why the judge felt that it was compelling to, it was important to take action now, because the Office of Administrative Law takes months to adjudicate these cases, and it could be such that someone is actually conflicted, but they were allowed to vote anyway. And, you know, this contract's a three-year contract, so it's possible that by the time that these cases get adjudicated, it will, it would have been too late. So what do you say about the fact that, you know, School Ethics Commission and Office of Administrative Law take over a year to adjudicate these cases? And so if somebody has a conflict of interest, I mean, action won't be taken until after the vote takes place. And I think that's why the judge found it very problematic, and the judge ruled that this matter should be stayed until the Commissioner of Education or the School Ethics Commission exercises its primary restriction in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Aziz. Your time is up. Again, Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to reiterate that that is not the order of the judge?
Well, I mean, to the extent that the judge sent this over to the School Ethics Commission, that was the whole heart of our application. It didn't belong before him in the first place. I'm not going to go through everything that was said here, other than the assertion that there was a, there's an ethics matter being investigated by the Office of Administrative Law. The Office of Administrative Law is not an investigative body. It's an adjudicative body within the executive branch. There are various ways, if there were legitimate concerns, to bring them before the Commissioner of Education or a judge for an expeditious resolution. But honestly, in this particular case, I have spent a good time giving these plaintiffs an education as to how the process really works, and I'm going to decline to do so any further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Pete Tofano, Ten Cathon Street. I just, I find it hysterical that Mrs. Isaacs decided to file a lawsuit against the Board of Ed and their procedures when she was fired from the township for not paying township and medical coverage on time and left all those employees without medical coverage, and not, nobody mentioned that tonight. Not only that, she gets her full pension that I'm paying for. You know, it's always great to get fired from a job and to get your full pension, but we're not going to talk about that tonight. That's a whole nother issue. What I'd like to speak about is how the same group of people keep complaining to the county superintendent, Kyle Anderson, about Mrs. Chanley not having a doctorate, not being qualified, when Kyle Anderson doesn't have a doctorate, and he's the county superintendent. But that doesn't matter either, because that's just logical. I'd rather take a twenty-year veteran like her, four of my children have gone through this school system, four of the five children went through this school system. The fifth went through the East Brunswick School System, which you are correct when you said, didn't have the crazy people in the town that we have in this town, unfortunately. But, long story short, I'd rather take that woman with her twenty years' experience and the love that surrounds her with all the children than any person coming in here with a doctorate that has their head up there, you know what. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Radip Malam, Four Jake Place. I, for some time, I believe that we are in some code drama. I don't think we are in a Board of Education meeting. Our meeting is Board of Education. Please, please focus on education. Teacher, student, building, transportation. Please, that's all my request.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley, you're going to give the report for Dr. Lehman?
Yes, I am. So on behalf of Dr. Lehman, who always gets to share all the good news, our summer program is in full swing here, and here are a few highlights. This year's musical theater camp culminated with a performance of Leap Day before an audience of approximately seventy parents, guardians, faculty members, and members of the community in Monroe Township High School's Commons. Congratulations to Ms. Constantino and her students cast, which came from the Oak Tree School, Apple Goth Elementary School, and Monroe Township Middle School. The Book Club Beach Bash Literary Enrichment Program continues, featuring students from grades K through eight. Participants are provided with dozens of titles taken from our district's approved summer reading list. Activities are executed within the Book Club model, and students are provided with materials that encourage them to engage with texts while simultaneously enjoying the natural environment around our campus. The Summer of STEM Enrichment Program continues with activities designed in spirit of our district's STEM initiative and offers students collaborative, hands-on design challenges. The Monroe Township High School's credit completion services also continues in classes. Our summer school currently has students working towards successfully credit completion across eight courses. And lastly, but not least, our summer band program is ongoing and will host four summer band concerts. Our performers ranging from grades four through nine have been participating in small group and full ensemble lessons conducted by our district's instrumental specialists. Included in our summer band program this week was our Honest Percussion Academy, which happened last evening here in the Commons. Thank you. That concludes the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, none. The next item on the agenda is our Superintendent's Report and Recommendations. Mrs. Chanley?
Thank you, Mrs. Kirby. I will start off, before I go into some congratulations for those that have retired, and I will discuss our report, which we received on July fourteenth, which needs to be presented, and this is my presentation, regarding our NJQSAC report. Pursuant to the requirements of NJAC six A colon thirty, the Monroe Township School District has undergone the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is our NJQSAC initials, review. The Middlesex County Executive County Superintendent and team conducted a review of the district's self-assessment on the district performance review, which is referred to as the DPR, to verify the district's compliance with the five areas of NJQSAC: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. Based on the review, the district has been placed on the continuum of NJQSAC with the following placement scores for each area. Instruction and Program, eighty-seven percent. Fiscal Management, one hundred percent. Governance, one hundred percent. Operations, ninety-eight percent. And Personnel, ninety-seven percent. These placements results will be presented to the State Board of Education in upcoming meeting, which we are doing this evening. Please be advised that NJQSAC regulations require the district Board of Education to report these placement results at our regular board meeting, which is occurring this evening. I am pleased to inform you, and this is coming directly from Paula Bloom, acting, acting Executive Director, Division of Field Support and Services. I am pleased to inform you the district has satisfied at least eighty percent of the weighted indicators in each of the five areas of the NJQSAC and is designated as high-performing. The commissioner will recommend the State Board of Education and the district be certified as providing a thorough and efficient system of education for a period of three years or until the next NJQSAC review. Congratulations on this accomplishment pursuant to NJAC six A colon thirty dash four point one. If it is believed that any indicators were scored incorrectly, the district has seven days from receiving this letter to submit written reconsideration requests and supporting documentation, email your request and accompanying documents, and so forth. So after I've read you the letter, I would like to thank all of the department heads, all of the employees. This is a task that is difficult and is, requires a team approach. All of the members from the secretaries to the department heads, we have one sitting with us, I want to thank personally, Mr. Tagg, as well as the other sitting on our side here. We have Ms. Allen, who's with us. All of the secret, we have another secretary here, Ms. Tagliafarra, who happens to be the Business Administrator Secretary, Ms. Roshima Zalinski, and I do want to apologize in advance if I leave anybody out. Ms., I'm leaving a few people out, I'm sure. So that being said, any of the individuals that work in coordination to have the fabulous scores that we have set before us, it was a great accomplishment. I do think it also is important to note that this compilation of information to show and to verify that we are doing what is in the best interest of children in all of the five categories also could not be done without our administrative staff, inclusive of our principals, vice principals, supervisors, and so on. So if I left anybody out, I do apologize in advance. I do not always have all the names at the top of my head, but at the same time, success is always a team effort, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to present this, this evening in transparency.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay.
Great job. Just great job, everyone.
At this time, before I go into approval of all of the various different recommendations, I'd like to make a comment, which was brought forth this evening, so I do think it is important that we are transparent. So our Director of Security did resign, which is his, his purview, to do so, and after having it properly posted and following all of the requirements, we had a search, and we are very pleased that this evening, for purposes of the vote, we have Mr. Edward Selby, who will be voted on this evening. He comes to us from East Brunswick, and East Brunswick seems to be a positive topic of conversation, so I think it's very telling that he comes from East Brunswick. So he comes to us as a lead security officer. He has been there in that role since 2011, directly involved with students from K through twelve. We are very excited that he is going to be a fabulous asset to our community, because we do believe that security is about the community, students, staff, employees, and so forth. He was also a detective for twelve and a half years, and he also was a patrol officer for fourteen years, so from nineteen eighty to 2006, he had an extensive background. He is a gentleman who I am very confident will bring to us a concept of protocol, procedures, making sure that we follow statutes and laws. We have grown tremendously as a veteran here, where I will be starting my twentieth year on August the twenty-first of this year. I can tell you that things have changed and we cannot keep on doing same old, same old. We live in a world, unfortunately, with some sadness, and we bear the responsibility, I bear the responsibility currently as the acting superintendent, in compilation with the Board of Education, to make sure that we do anything and everything beyond, 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 to make sure that everyone is safe. So I'm very excited to have him be presented this evening as a recommendation for board approval through their vote, and I'm very excited to know, to let the public know that I think he's going to do a great job and be a fabulous asset. I will also let you know that in the past, the Director of Security, who also grew with the community in a very positive way, was predominantly stationed at the high school and was our Director of Security, but did work as a security guard at the high school, and we're making changes. The Director of Security position will be stationed at the central office, and let me clarify, because this information, before it is taken incorrectly. He will have a place to come and go from central office, but his requirement will be to be in each and every one of the eight schools, not just in one particular high school or the middle school, because we have larger numbers, just constantly moving and evaluating the schedule of what is needed, and then he'll come back with recommendations. And I do agree with Ms. Arminio, I want to thank her, that we will be bringing him to the policy committee, because we're very much interested in making sure that all protocol and policies are followed. So I did want to just give him a shout-out, because I do think it's appropriate. And if I may, I will then continue. May I first please wish the very best on their future endeavor, which I believe has begun, because we are in July and it is summer. So Mr. Robert Nikash Jr., who's a mechanic for our transportation department, I wish him well in his retirement. Additionally, Ms. Randy Halpern, who I had the pleasure of working with personally, who was a paraprofessional at the time at the middle school, and I believe she also worked in some of the elementary schools. She has since retired, and I think that's absolutely wonderful, and she left our home by being a para at the high school. Additionally, one more retirement is retirement Ms. Catherine Lobo, who was a secretary at Woodland School. She is also going on to bigger and better things, and I wish them all health, happiness, and peace of mind as they enjoy their retirement. If I may? At this time, for a ten-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personal items A through AL.
Second.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yes.
Actually, it's not a question, it's a comment on item W, for approval of volunteer coaches for high school. I did start this discussion last month when we were approving paid staff for sports, and I, I am in conversation with Dr. Lehman about this. I, I strongly feel that we need to evaluate the need of our programs, because we cannot rely on volunteers if our programs are really growing in numbers. We need enough adequate paid coaches in the program, and I am coming from a personal perspective, because I, my children are involved in some sports, and I do know the contribution that some of the volunteer coaches are making. So I would strongly urge the administration to reevaluate, maybe sport by sport, and see what the numbers are, and, and maybe have a conversation with the athletic director about a process in place for a threshold above which another paid coach is required. So I will be voting yes for this, but I wanted to make sure before I did I made that comment. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Ms. Ratner?
I just had a question regarding the enrollment. I was wondering if, we have the student count every, so we can see year by year the growth, and then we have the, a really detailed staff count, which is wonderful. I was wondering if, since it's already there as data, if we can have that year by year so we can see what's going on, where we're growing, like where we're adding more staff members as well. So that was just a question, I mean. And then, just the other thing, just because it's part of the home instruction, I was just wondering, given that we are in July, if next month we'll be reviewing policy regarding virtual home instruction or not for September?
Ms. Chanley? Sure. So with regards to staff growth or decrease, if that's something the Board of Education would like, I can absolutely speak with Ms. Zalinski and Ms. Tagliafarra, who are the wonderful people that put together this agenda. So if that's something you'd like, if you believe it's appropriate, I'd be happy to do so.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we send that to the personnel committee and see what they decide. I think we, we do things by committee. I don't think we should arbitrarily decide.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Belko. I'll be happy, Mr. Nikotinsky, if you'd like to put that on the agenda for next month. And regarding, I apologize, what was your...
Oh, home instruction for next year.
Oh, yes. I would imagine that we work by committee, Ms. Arminio, we will have that, to discuss that?
Just make a note of that and email.
Sure.
May I appreciate?
And I don't know if anybody has any other questions, because I am going to respond to Ms. Bora if anybody else has done. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Seeing none, you can cut.
Ms. Bora, thank you, and I do agree with you a hundred percent. I would like to share with you that we did have one additional at this time, which would be, I don't know if they're going to be the freshman coach or just an assistant coach... be, I don't know if they're going to be the freshman coach or just an assistant coach for cheer, but Dr. Higgins from the high school did approach me, and I did speak with Ms. Allen to make sure that it was appropriate for purposes of the budget, and we did agree, and it was approved, because we did start to see that we did not want to turn away children. So I agree with you a hundred percent, and that's something we could look into, and I could speak further on the matter with Mr. Dowling. Thank you.
We had a first and a second. Any other questions? No, we can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, we're queues on nine, D, item A, the Superintendent.
A.D.
Thank you.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes to all, no to A.D.
Ms. Arminio?
No on A.D., yes to the rest. Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes to all.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. For a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the Board approve the attached personal items AM through CM.
Second. Okay, are there any questions, comments? No, may we please have a roll call?
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. It is recommended, apology, nine, excuse me, ten-member vote, it is recommended that the Board approves the attached Board actions, items A through O, with the exception of Regulation and Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities.
We agreed to leave them.
Oh, I think we agreed to table them, I apologize.
Did you want?
Table the first read.
Yeah. Well, we have to, if you're going to table it, we have to have a motion to table, correct? No?
Well, it wasn't part of it, we didn't say we were going to table it, we said we were going to take it off the agenda and bring it back to.
Yeah, if it's not placed before the Board, that way it's a motion, you don't need a motion to table.
Okay, I didn't say we had to take it off, I said we could leave it and reevaluate it next week, but if Mr. Chiarella feels that it needs to be taken off, is that how to do it, Mr. Gagliardino? Either way.
Gagliardi.
Gagliardi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, those are Italian names, I know.
No, I have a dear friend that I grew up with, Gagliardo, sorry.
No problem. Yeah, the proper thing to do is just don't act on it, and then I think the consensus of the Board was referred to committee, so I think procedurally it's fine.
That's fine, okay.
So I intentionally made sure not to remove it so that you wouldn't have to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have questions, sir.
We have to do the motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
But I had a question, so no motion, right?
Now you can.
No, you have to have a motion.
We made a motion. We have a second. Now, any questions?
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, sorry, I was in a rush to ask the question. Item M, which is for American Institutes of Research, and I apologize, I've been asking Dr. Lehman that, and he's on vacation. I'm just curious, if this was approved by any committee, because he did let me know that this is the first time we are working with American Institutes for Research. So was there any discussion before on this agreement with American Institutes of Research? Would you know?
I believe that Dr. Lehman did handle that, and it is my understanding that it was discussed with Ms. Ruela, as well as other child study members, to consider the fact that they wanted to go forward with it.
All right, so a board committee was not in the?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And I had a comment on item J, where we are introducing stipends, either technology stipends, which is great, we definitely need to encourage our staff members to get trained, but what I noticed in the list, in the attachment, was that currently we do not have a Google Professional Collaboration Engineer, and Microsoft has come up with all of these new certifications, and I don't believe any of the staff currently has that certification. So I was, I think my comment is that if we could encourage a couple of staff members to really take this on, you know, earlier on in the school year, because our reliance to both Google and Microsoft applications is pretty heavy in the district. And last comment was the attachment for the job description, Mrs. Chanley, we spoke about it, the date on that should reflect the changes that have happened. I think the attachment that we got reflected 10/21 as the last change date, this is the confidential secretary to the chief school administrator, if we could have the January date, and then this July's date updated on that job description.
Right, and we did describe, and if I may ask counsel?
Yes.
So originally, the original, October of 2021, there was a revision, or an update, an update to the chief school administrator's confidential secretary, which was status quo and good. Once the Oprah was added, it was revised again, as Ms. Bora has said, in January. So my question, and that's why I didn't ask her to change it yet, because I wanted to ask him, my question is, would it be appropriate to leave the October, because all we're doing is removing what we put on in January, or do we have to put a new date, because now it's being removed?
I don't know that you have to have a new date, the real, the key is that Board action is necessary, right? Only the Board can undo what the Board did.
Correct. So the October date could remain because the job description is identical to what it was prior to the January? Because that's why I left it.
All right, so the change in January, though, procedurally, did not get recorded in that document as well. So I'm just, from a versioning perspective, we did not record that we changed the job description in January. The date on it is 10/21, is what the original description was, but we changed as a district, we changed that description once in January, and now we're changing it again in July. Do we need that versioning? You know how our policy documents have all the different revision dates? So that's where my question is coming from.
No, I understand the question. I don't know that the policy, I don't know that the job description was changed. I think the Board passed a resolution assigning those responsibilities.
Yes, we did.
But the job description itself was never changed.
No, yes.
I believe it was.
Yes, it was.
So, so if that language was added to the job description, and you voted not simply on a resolution, but you voted on a new job description?
Yes.
And we'll change the date.
I don't think I'm sure about that.
Right, so then you're voting on a new job description tonight, so what you're saying is the historical date references should reflect that.
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood the question, and I think that is the better policy.
And it can be voted on this evening.
It still can be voted on this evening, but you just want those dates reflecting.
Yeah, just, yeah, we can vote on it, for the record purpose of.
And I will take care of that to make sure that the bottom, thank you.
Yes, thank you, we'll take it.
And the last point is, and Mrs. Chanley, if you would elaborate on this, the item items, action items U, V, and W, which are great initiatives for addition of programs, special needs programs to Woodland and Barclaybrook, if you could, we are approving the establishment of the program, and I know there are details associated with it, that I was in conversation with Mrs. Chanley to find out.
That's not in this section, I'm sorry.
It's in the next section.
I'm sorry.
It's in the next section.
Oh, hold on to your question.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do you have a question, Ms. Belko?
I just had a statement about the job description. Would that not fall under the purview of the Human Resources, Head of Human Resources, to make sure that those things are kept up to date when we make those changes?
The answer is yes, and I think for this particular situation, because there was so much conversation and public comments, I think that in this particular situation, perhaps we should put the revised date and Ms. Bora's, Bora's, our attention. But I agree with you a hundred percent.
Agreed, but we should make sure we.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes to all.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And my final recommendations for the evening, nine-member vote, it is recommended that the Board approve the attached Board action items P through X.
Motion.
Second. Yes, and my question, and I'll repeat what I just asked, I would like Mrs. Chanley to share with everybody what action items U, V, W entail, besides just approval of the establishment of the programs. Thank you.
My pleasure. So we are very, very excited in a positive way to go ahead and move forward with three additional self-contained classrooms, two that will be opening for September in Woodland, and one that will be opening in Barclaybrook. The reason why it's written in this fashion is because what we do is, we are required to provide to the state, our reasoning would have to do with enrollment, something that has also been near and dear to my heart, and one of my, one of the goals that I was tasked with was also to look and evaluate the programs and trying to bring them into all of the neighborhood schools, rather than just have specific sites where we have the self-contained programs. So that's why we're opening up two programs at Woodland that we've never had, and then one additional that's needed at Barclaybrook. So what happens is, we put forth, we must have an approval by the Board of Education so that we can send it to the county. There are already other documents that have been signed by myself, that Ms. Ruela and I've had this discussion about, that have already been forwarded to the county, we wait for the Board of Education meeting, they're then approved, that is then forwarded to the county. Within that timeframe, we make sure that within this budget cycle, the appropriate needs have been budgeted for, which are inclusive of teachers and supplies for the three classrooms. And we're, and space has already been allotted. So I think it's important for the public to know, and of course, any question, any time, any public member is more than welcome to ask regarding the course. We're very excited about these programs, because it's giving us an opportunity, and I would like to move forward with this, we're going to be doing this in the other schools, to start having the opportunity for children to go to their home school when they are in need of a specialized program. Thank you, Ms. Bora.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to conclude your report.
That concludes my report.
Item on the agenda is our Business Administrator's Report. Ms. Allen?
It's recommended that the Board action items for the ten-member vote, A through M, be approved by consent roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Ratner?
I just wanted to ask regarding the item A, number two, regarding Reed Sound. I know that in the past, there was a staff member, I believe at the high school, I don't know if there was one at the middle school as well, who sort of oversaw the sounds and tech stuff for the auditoriums, and I know that it's been outsourced. Just looking at the cost, because each event has a 10-hour minimum, and the rate is higher than our instructional rate, I was wondering if that's something that is like a necessity that we outsource, if we only outsource it when we don't have a staff member to handle that stuff, or if there's something else that I just might not be aware of, that we have to have a contract. But I just feel like, especially with that 10-hour minimum, you know, you essentially talk about a two-hour concert paying for 10 hours, which is significant, so.
Mr. Tag, would you please?
Sir, regarding to Reed Sound, that is. For outside use of buildings, so if there's an outside group who wants to use a facility for a dance rehearsal or something along those lines, they pay Reed Sound. We have in-district staff, those who are actually working here tonight, Mr. Halatic and others from the TV group, who handle school events, so that's where that is. That is really just a pass-through cost for outside use of buildings, and there's no markup on that by the Board of Education.
Okay, just to ask really quick, because I thought I had saw, I'd seen in the bill list that they do handle some of the concerts as well.
They do. If our staff is not available, then they have the option of using Reed Sound as well.
And then we're still subject to that 10-hour minimum?
For performances, yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, on item number nine, it is recommended that the Board members approve DLB associates, and who, are they, is that different, and in addition to, we used to have Edwards Engineer and the ones we're using for, it's page 27 of 32.
It's actually number eight.
I'm sorry?
It's number eight. You said nine.
No, no, it's eight. It's nine now, I believe. Let's keep that taken on. It is number nine. Number nine, okay. DLB associates, and then MER engineering, do you know what I'm talking, like?
Yes, I do.
Edwards.
If you'd like me to address that?
Yes.
Certainly. Edwards Engineering is a civil engineering firm, civil engineering and land surveying. They, for example, are doing the stadium project for us, the track and turf and so on. They're also doing the parking lot behind the middle school. DLB are mechanical engineers, mechanical, electrical, fire protection, things along those lines.
And MER, they're on there too. MER, Engineer of Record. MEP, sorry. Same one. For, yeah, we have DLB associates and MEP, Engineer of Record.
As the MEP. As the MEP.
As an MEP.
Which is mechanical.
Electrical plumbing.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tag.
So just a question out of curiosity, what I think is number seven with 25 different languages, is that, we need all those 25, or those are the 25 that they offer, and it just covers everything?
Yeah, doesn't mean we're going to use them, but it's available.
I'm kind of just curious if we had all these different.
If I remember correctly, from one of the Curriculum Committee meetings where we were talking about our ELA program, we do have about nineteen different languages spoken in this district, so it's a lot. I can go back and get the exact number, I don't have it remembered.
This is 25.
We have a lot of, yes.
I speak 14 of those, Paul.
It's you and a few other kids.
Only that same one word of all of them.
Just the bad words.
Yes, Ms. Arminio?
Yes, and number 10, 28 of 32. So is number 10, two times 5,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that's two, okay. And are we going to talk about the, oh no, I'm sorry. Okay, I think I actually read everything else. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have any other questions?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, I don't know which of you had typed it up, but I do remember there was a gentleman in the audience in the past month who had asked for some of the initial letters to be given, their exact wording, and so I see that has happened for the most part throughout the agenda, so I just wanted to compliment you and thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call?
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, it is recommended that board action items for nine-member vote N through P be approved by consent roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions, comments? Mrs. Ratner?
Um, just for item O, just wanted to thank the MTA for the donation. I saw the pictures, it looks wonderful. So I really, you know, I think it's very exciting to have. And then item P, and this might have been discussed in BG and T and I usually try to watch the meetings, I didn't have the chance. The temporary classroom units at the middle school, is that for an additional seventh grade team that will be housed there or is that for utilization of another class?
Mr. Teague?
Yes, that refers to the existing trailers that are presently there. The county superintendent's office and the Department of Education require that the board annually approve those for another school year, so that's the approval for the upcoming school year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, may we please have a roll call? Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Okay, our next item is our Board President's Report. Since the last meeting, members of the board, including myself, Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Belko, Mr. Rutsky, Mr. Nikotinsky, along with administration, attended the high school graduation at the Cure Arena in Trenton. It was such a wonderful afternoon celebrating the achievements of our students and wishing them much success in the next chapter of their lives. Although summer is here, work does not stop here in the school district. The district administration staff has continued to work diligently toward opening of the 22, 23 school year in September, and as approved tonight, it will be under the leadership of our permanent superintendent, Mrs. Chanley. Congratulations, Mrs. Chanley, and thank you for wanting to continue your career here in Monroe Township as our chief school administrator. Next month marks 20 years of your service to Monroe and with your expertise, experience and background, we know you will lead Monroe forward. Where educating our students to be successful here in our district as well as beyond their high school years is at the forefront. Your excitement and positivity to move our district forward has been evident over the last eight months that you were here as our acting superintendent and we are confident it will continue. I also want to thank and congratulate Ms. Allen for continuing on as our acting business administrator. Her dedication and expertise has allowed our district to not skip a beat during this time. On behalf of the board, I want to express our gratitude to Ms. Allen and the entire business office for all they do for our district. I would also like to welcome our new director of security who we just approved, Mr. Selby. He comes to us from East Brunswick like Mrs. Chanley told us, and we are looking forward to him joining our district with his background expertise to make our district even safer than it currently is. Speaking of security, it is unfortunate that a member of the public recently went on social media and posted that parents should hug their kids extra tight because our security director resigned and Monroe was now not safe. She went on to say that kids would be coming home in body bags after some school shooting. Myself and fellow board members felt this was a threat to our district, our students and our staff. Not that we thought she would actually partake in violence, but she sent a message on a public page that she manages and told the entire world that Monroe Township is unsafe. When she did that, it was my feeling that she was alerting people that we have a security issue, which we do not. This alone can cause some evildoers to be drawn to Monroe. We think it cannot happen here in our town, but it can, and what was done was not only upsetting, it was a danger to our students, our staff and our entire community. I know that Mrs. Chanley has contacted the Monroe Township Police Department and they are actively investigating her report. I also informed county superintendent Kyle Anderson of the posts and our concerns. He asked if the county prosecutor's office was notified. At the time of the call, there was no contact with prosecutor's office, however, it is my understanding that they have been made aware. Safety is paramount. I want to send a message tonight to our community that the Monroe Township School District is safe. There has been no lack of attention to our security measures since Mr. Piero's resignation effective July 15th, and we look forward to working with our new security director to improve upon what we already do here in Monroe to protect everyone in our schools. What was posted on the social media was not only irresponsible, but it was dangerous to our children and our staff, and for that, they deserve an apology. It is apparent this community member does not care about the safety of our district. Otherwise, she would delete that post and stop the false narrative of security issues. Lastly, or next, I was informed yesterday by Mr. Rutsky of his intention to resign this evening as the Jamesburg representative. Our board attorney and the Jamesburg board attorney did speak today. A new representative from Jamesburg will be voted on tomorrow evening and will be sworn in to the Monroe Township Board of Education at the August meeting, seeing all legally required paperwork is received. I know Mr. Rutsky plans to discuss more of that in other board business, and we thank you for all of your service here and we wish you much success and we look forward to working with the new representative when she is approved. Lastly, as I had discussed earlier, the board has been sent the proposed corrective action plan that is required by OFAC, which is the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. And at this time, Mr. Gagliardi, if you could please present that plan for us.
Thank you, Madam President. So we discussed this at the board meeting of June 15th, that the board was required to prepare a corrective action plan as it relates to designations of higher education degrees. And so with that, the board has before it for consideration this evening, a proposed corrective action plan in a format dictated by the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. The corrective action for the board is to adopt a policy that employees who wish to append their name, to their name, a title or letters indicating the attainment of a higher education degree, provide the district with verification of the receipt of the degree or certificate for which the letters are registered. This will be implemented as follows. Such verification will be required before any employee is allowed to append such title or letters to their name as it appears in or on the following, the district website, district letterhead, all district correspondence, including email, and any district publications, including yearbooks. Employees already using such titles will be required to provide such verification on or before September 21st. The building principals and superintendent will be responsible for implementing this policy. And so, consistent with the requirements of the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance, I respectfully submit to the Board of Education this evening the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas under cover letter dated May 19, 2022, the New Jersey Department of Education Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance served on Ms. Chrissy Skirby, board president, a written report reflecting its investigation with respect to the doctor designation having been attached to acting superintendent Shari Stanley's name several years ago in middle school yearbooks when she was then serving as principal. And whereas the report concluded that there was no evidence that the title was used beyond the yearbook or that she benefited from the use of such title in that one location, and whereas, as required, the findings in the report were reviewed and discussed at the Board of Education meeting of June 15, 2022, and whereas the board was directed to submit a corrective action plan to address the issues raised in the findings, and whereas the board has approved the attached corrective action plan, now therefore be it resolved that the board authorizes its legal counsel to submit to the Department of Education the attached corrective action plan. That is submitted to the board for consideration. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
So is that a resolution?
It is a resolution. It is a, okay.
Let's talk it.
Okay, are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Arminio?
Mr. Gagliardi?
Yes.
Will that be translated into a policy and do we need a new policy number?
Um, the language that I articulated should be translated into a policy. So that's, that is the corrective action that you're going to undertake.
Okay. So do, should we discuss that with Strauss Esme or can we just name a policy and number a policy for that?
Um, I don't think you need to discuss it with Strauss Esme because I'm sure they have never contended with a policy like this.
Okay.
Um, so it would go before the policy committee, you would designate the number in terms of the section you'd want it.
Okay.
Unlike anything else before the policy committee though, this is not first reading, second reading, this is something you're now obligated to do.
Right. Okay. If we have any questions, Madam President, could I reach out to you, Mr. Gagliardi?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a first and a second. May we please have a roll call? Mr. Rutsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, Mr. Gagliardi, I should, I should be okay to say yes or is there conflict? Should I, I mean, I'm-
I understand the nature of the question and no, you're simply setting a policy, there's no conflict.
Okay, then yes.
So noted. Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great, thank you. And just one other note that I want to say, a big congratulations to our newly approved principals, Mrs. Ursalina Chetta, who is here this evening. Congratulations and welcome to the Monroe Falcon family. We know you are going to be a great addition and a great asset to our district and the students are so very lucky to have you as their principal, as well as Ms. Pamela Ackerman as well. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you here in our district and we welcome you again to our Falcon family here and thank you for coming and believing in the Monroe Township School District with your expertise to help build us better schools. Thank you. And I believe, I was going to have you, Mr. Gagliardi, talk about the litigation, but I know we already covered that, or is there anything else that you would like to add?
I, I think the quality of the board meeting is diminished by continual discussion from the board attorney, so I have nothing further to add about the litigation.
Okay, great. And that concludes my president's report. Our next item on the agenda is other board business. Mrs. Ratner?
Sure. Um, hope everyone's having a nice summer. I wanted to congratulate all the retirees, wish you best of luck on your future endeavors. I also wanted to welcome our new administrators and staff members. So I don't even think she realized this yet because I haven't had my maiden name since I was 22, but Ms. Chetta, I grew up with your sister, we played soccer together. Josephine, yeah. I, I know, I recognize them, they've watched me play soccer for 10 years. But, um, so I saw your name and I was very excited and I even remember, because you were like, I think, three years older than, than we were, you were a role model for all of us back then and so. My daughter just graduated from Woodland, but my sons will be there someday, so. No problem. I also just wanted to say that it has been a very tense and divisive couple of years and I will not place the blame on any one person or one group. Our Monroe School's mission statement says, "The Monroe Public Schools, in collaboration with members of the community, shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained and committed staff in a safe and orderly environment." So as we approach into another campaign season, which we all know can get very heated at times, I just wanted to remind all of the potential candidates, supporters and critics to please keep that in mind. If we could divert our energy from the negative statements and personal attacks and channel it into working collaboratively, we could get so much more accomplished. There is a really great quote from Helen Keller, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." We really have so much that we need to get done and I'm certainly not naive to think everyone's going to become best friends, but I hope that we can all try to utilize each other's strengths and make as much progress as possible to create a positive impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ratner. Anybody else? Ms. Belko?
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Dr. Higgins for the invite to the high school graduation. Very different view from being on the stage. Overwhelmed me when I walked into the Cure Arena, brought me to tears. It was really an amazing thing. I had one son graduate into Cure Arena and my daughters unfortunately graduated in 2020, so, but, but that was just as beautiful because I graduated on a football field and I definitely think that's an awesome way to go, but just to see the smiles on the children's faces and the seniors and just that they were, you know, like this was, they put a lot of hard work and it was really my pleasure and honor to be there and that's what it was all about. I stood there and that's what this is all about and I have to echo Mrs. Ratner with, you know, we need to get along, you know, do the right thing because it's the right thing to do and make our decisions and move forward. We have done so much in the last 10 months, 11 months, we have just moved really forward. We have been transparent, we have let people know exactly what we're doing and we are, we're open. We, we, we answer questions, we answer emails, we are here and we allow people to, to go. I personally have chosen to stay off of social media because it just has not, it's not the thing to do and those that are out there that are berating and brashing our board for the amazing things that we've done, if you look at this agenda tonight, we, we have special A classes in all of our schools now. I remember fighting when my children were three years old about, you know, because they wanted to ship my daughter all the way across to Applegarth at three years old to go to school and I, I had to fight for that. And now parents don't have to fight for that, they have it in their home school, they can be part of their home school. I have triplets and people, you know, I, I always think people assume, know that about me, I, I don't wear it on my forehead, but, you know, so I have two gen ed students and a specials needs student and it was very important for me to keep them together. And so I see this as a great thing moving forward for all of our other students. I see some of the great things that we're doing here, the BG and T committee, I go past the high school, we're making forward movements. Mr. Teague is just amazing, I, I don't know how he does it. 69 people, puts it at eight people per building, maybe seven with two floaters, I'm not really sure, but I think that that's great and the management of all that and I really think, you know, it's time for us to, with new leadership at the helm, to move forward, give you the reins, allow you to make those decisions and, and, and we just ask questions, that's what we're here for. We're supposed to ask questions, we're supposed to be the ones to poke and prod and ask those questions and be there and do things by committee. That's the one thing I just want to remind my board members is, is that we should not be having individual conversations, but we should be bringing things to committees and we should be moving forward that way and not, not any other way. So thank you for my soapbox for a few minutes, I appreciate it.
Ms. Bora?
All right, on that wave, I want to echo what Mrs. Ratner said, we need to come together. We need, we're making great strides and we can continue to make strides. The point about the election season is very critical, we all need to put the children first. Let's put the children first, let's put our school district and administration and staff first. I do want to take a minute to say that in the last seven months that I've been a board member, in over 20 meetings, one of the constants was my goodbye to Mr. Durski every night, whether it was 2P, 2:00 AM or it was 9:00 PM, so I am going to miss Mr. Durski, I see his resignation on the agenda. Thanks to Mr. Durski, thanks also to Mr. Piero because I, my children have seen him all the way from kindergarten up until high school, senior. Both those security guards that have played a role in my personal life, I would want to say thank you. Mr. Rutsky, that was a huge surprise, you will be missed, thank you for the years of service you have done for Jamesburg and Monroe students. And last but not the least, congratulations. This has been a few rough months coming to this point today. There's been a lot of work that went into the superintendent's search. I would like to, as a board member, say that there has been transparency, there has been due diligence done, we followed the process as much as, when I came on the board in January, this was my biggest agenda, the superintendent's search. And I go to sleep well at night because I know I did what I promised I would do. We did not leave any stone unturned. What we decided as a board with a consensus is what we think is the best for the district and I hope the district will come together and put their force behind the new leadership, give the new leadership an opportunity. Like Ms. Belko said, we have made great strides in the last seven months that I've seen, 11 months that she's talking about. We need to keep that momentum going, let's put positive vibes out there, this town needs that, our children need that, and that's my request to the town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Rutsky?
May I? So first I would just want to talk about graduation because the high school graduation, second to none, I always consider that a perk of sitting here till 1:00 in the morning, month after month, and so for me, giving my kids, my nieces, my nephews, their friends, their diplomas, it's just such a high, it's such a, a great event and will always be one of my highlights, so I thank you for that opportunity. So I grew up in Monroe, I met my wife at the high school 32 years ago and settling into Jamesburg, when I got onto the Jamesburg Board 10 years ago, one of my goals was to get here and become the rep for the Monroe Board. It took me two years to get Rob Zarneski to step aside, but he did. And so it's been eight years I've been serving as the Jamesburg rep on this Monroe Board. It is now time for me to move on. It's been an honor for me to sit here as both a proud Jamesburg parent, to represent the Jamesburg School District, as well as what I've always considered to be a full Monroe Board Member, and that was something that shifted, I don't know, five, maybe six years ago. And it was something I never took lightly, I always, when I sat in the seat, I always tried to think not only of the Jamesburg students in high school, but of the district as a whole, and again, all my great memories of growing up in Monroe. So definitely something that, this is a bittersweet moment for me. My three kids have all come through the high school with great success, I can honestly I can honestly say two out of the three are definitely on their way to taking on the outside world. My son remains to be seen. He's got four years of college ahead of him. But it is my hope that this board always keeps their focus on the students as priority number one. It's my other hope that the relationship between Jamesburg and Monroe remains positive, objective, and once again, always focuses on the betterment of the children. So I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity. I've seen a lot of great things in eight years. I've made a lot of great friends over eight years, and I promise you, we're handing you another very qualified representative, and she'll be ready to start next month. So I, I look forward to you all welcoming, welcoming her and treating her fairly as well as you have always treated me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chielo. Yeah, I just, I, I want, I was going to start off with the other things, but then Paul stole my thunder. But Paul, I just want to say that, that I just want to thank you for your service and thank you for your time. I think over the years, we've become friends. I know our kids are very good friends. I just want to know, did you make Rob move as well, or you just moved him aside? Because I know he's down south now.
Yeah, he's done.
So you, he had a move, move.
Added a picture.
No, that's fair, and I'm sure he understands. The, I, I want to, I want to congratulate Ms. Chanley, and I also want to, you know, just congratulate our retirees. Of course, I want to congratulate, congratulate you as well. You're looking at me. I've been saying that for days now, but I think you're, I think you're, you're doing a great job, and I just want to thank you for your service and really stepping up, even though, and I said this before, even though you were instrumental in being the, the person behind, you know, all, everything, the strength of our finance department, which, you know, we, we have, we have a great finance department, and, and Nancy Santino, and thank you also for stepping up and taking on this role. I, I think it's very important, but I didn't want to go without mentioning you as well. NJ CUSAC is, is, is a great achievement, and, and we just can't gloss over it, and I don't think we did, but I just want to, I just want to bring that up again. And I just want to also say that graduation was wonderful, and it, you know, when you're standing up there and you're looking out at the kids and you realize, and it, and it's grown over the years, all the years that I've been on the board, and then I look out there and I see those kids and I feel that sense of pride that that, that's Monroe. When you get to see the future of Monroe right in front of you, all, all, right in front of you, all the kids, all the, just the future, and they're there, and they're, and they're positive, and they have, they have, you know, these bright futures that are yet to be fulfilled, and it's really an amazing experience. And, and so in, in some ways, it's very selfish to, but it's really the only reason that we're here. And, and, and to just go through that moment, and Paul said it better than I can, but all of this, you, you live through to be able to do that. And so that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that concludes other board business. Next on our agenda is our public forum. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the microphone. You have four minutes. State your name and address for the record. Hello.
Thank you. Good evening. Pradeep Malam, Fort Jake Place. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Chanley, and being officially superintendent doesn't ease your job. It will be another uphill task, much more steeper. I wish you are ready for that. And Ms. Allen, and whoever is appointed today, and retirees. So first question is to Ms. Chanley. Like, how are we doing with the lot of retirees and lot of resignations? How are we doing with the teachers enrollment, recruiting?
Oh, Mr. Malam, do you have multiple questions?
Yes.
Because we've been asking if we can ask the questions up front, and then we'll write them down and answer them when you're, when you're finished.
Okay, thanks. So that is the, my first question. Second question, where are we on the, on the next referendum that we are planning? I would like to, like, see some statement or something from either BG&amp;T Chair or from, from the President itself or somebody. And thanks for your service, Mr. Ruski, and it's been an honor. We met a couple of times, and thanks for all your service as a finance chair and as a board member and representative of Jamesburg. Thank you. But last but not least, are we going, is, is Mr. Gorskis on, like, suspension with pay still?
Is that your final question?
Yes, that's my final question. Are, there will be some follow-up if he's on, if he's on suspension with pay?
Yes, currently, it is suspension with pay.
Okay. What if, if he found guilty, are we going to recover this pay when we, he's on suspension?
I can't comment on that at this moment.
Okay.
Because it is an ongoing personal issue.
So today, in our audience, there are a lot of former board members and former board chairman and everybody who gave him raises, who gave him a couple of weeks extended vacation, even though he found guilty of three counts on school ethics commission. He pleaded guilty. It's not anybody forced him. He pleaded guilty. He violated our board ethics, board policies, three of them, even though he was, got risen, and it was overlooked by the same board members. If it was found out at that, and if he was, like, treated this, this particular person correctly, then we should not have this paying double salary for the same role. We should have avoided that. You guys might have introspect your actions. That's all my questions.
Okay, so Mrs. Chanley, if you want to take those two questions?
Thank you very much as, as well, and we're doing excellent. We're doing very well. So what happens is, the interviewing process starts at the building level, and then all of those candidates get forwarded to either myself or the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Layman, who is on a probably well-needed vacation. So we're in excellent shape for staffing. We're in excellent shape. Some of our greatest needs were particularly in the area of nursing staff and BCBA's speech pathologists, physical therapists. I am very proud to say that they were board-approved tonight. We waited to the very last minute, so I do want to say thank you to the board for your patience. I do appreciate you. We waited to the very last minute to get all of those interviews in so that we can get them board-approved. So we feel very confident that we will be fully staffed for our September 1st opening.
Thank you.
And with regard, I mean, I can speak on it as well, but I think that it's, it's, Mr. Tegg, if you just want to say where we are in the process, that would be fabulous. Regarding the referendum.
Certainly, if anyone would like to check, posted on the district website is a detailed schedule of the process. We are currently in design development with the ed specs and the schematics, getting ready for the estimating process to start within the next two weeks. I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with Mr. Rich Alderiso, Principal with Design Ideas Group. He, Dr. Layman, myself, and the building principals have been working on the schematic designs and the educational specifications. We are on target for submission in late September, I believe, and we're on target for the referendum, which is April 2023 public vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one final question I forgot, like, regarding our website as ADA compliant, there is another website which might not be ADA compliant when I browse through, like, mobile or other thing, which is our board docs website, where we put all our policies and regulations. I think we might need to look into that as well because that is owned by us, even though it is hosted by somebody else, but it's our responsibility to make sure that's ADA compliant. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Maddy Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. First, thank you, Paul, for being a reasonable, thoughtful, moral, intelligent, knowledgeable, respectful member of this BOE. May your future be filled with good health, joy, and calm. And I do have prepared notes, but I just wanted to say one thing. Thank you, Ms. Ratner, for saying what you said, and Ms. Gerbi, I agree with you. What people write on Facebook, really, people need to watch what they write on Facebook because regardless if it's a private site or not, everybody gets to see it. With that, I hope these are my last negative comments. By the way, I am a retired teacher who's passionate about education, have no children in Monroe, but care, care so deeply about our children having the best forward-thinking education that they can have, and that's the only reason that I'm involved. I recently read posts by Ms. Gerbi, Mr. Nikotinsky, and Mr. Chielo that I find quite disturbing. They decided to defend their decisions by this BOE by bringing in a community member's religion because they truly do not wish to be transparent and apparently want to keep the public uninformed. They probably figured they'd quiet this community member down by personally profiling her. I am Jewish. I am technologically savvy, as are some of the names mentioned above, and can certainly research people's backgrounds. Racism and religious discrimination and attacks seem to be rampant in this country and around the world, and to use this strategy to discredit a community member who works hard researching and reporting facts is only encouraging more egregious behavior. Fact, Ms. Chanley does not have a doctorate. Fact, the taxpayers are contributing for Ms. Chanley's education. Fact, Ms. Chanley has been trying to attain this doctorate for 18 to 20 years. Fact, Ms. Chanley, Ms. Gerbi, Mr. Chielo, and Ms. Nikotinsky are friends. Fact, I am a practicing Jew, and that has nothing to do with reporting the facts. With all the race and religious-related shootings happening in this country, the fact that these board members have stoked the flames of racism against an innocent member of our community and her family is horrible, and I hope the citizens of Monroe remember. You know, part of the problem in our country is a laissez-faire attitude of many people who sit back and accept lies as truths, could care less about voting, do not speak out to express their beliefs, or use technology to research. Well, I'm happy that we have a hard-working, truth-telling researcher among us in Monroe, and the truth of the matter is, we don't have to believe everything, we don't have to agree with everything, but when somebody is taking the time to do the research and showing reality, I love that you're laughing, Mr. Chielo, because that's basically how you act in the comments that you write. Anyway, we don't have to agree, but the fact is, we certainly shouldn't be picking on somebody's religion or calling them anti-Semitic because they're reporting.
Thank you, and on behalf of this Board of Education, I would like to say, none of that was a fact that you just read. No board member here disparaged anybody and made any racist marks to them. It was actually quite the contrary of what was out there. So that is not a fact that you presented. And whether or not you want to talk about the research that's been going on, it's not been research, it's been harassment and intimidation, and it's been absolutely disgusting, the lies, the absolute lies and misinformation that has been posted about our acting superintendent, now thankfully, our amazing superintendent, that the amount of misinformation, the amount of lies that have been taken place, the call to action to go to the governor, to go to the county, to go to, I don't know, maybe the President of the United States. The fact of the matter is, everything this Board of Education did was lawful, and we abided by statute, and the fact is, the Commissioner of Education and the County Superintendent, we have a letter from them approving the contract. Those are the facts. Nobody made any racist comments, and to come up here and disparage board members and to accuse us of that is inappropriate. Thank you.
Hi, Gail DePaine, 356 C. Old Nassau. Mr. Ruski, I want to thank you for your time on, and stop shaking your head now. I was on a board for 18 years, and I know that your time, would you say 10 years? I just want to know, are you going to be hanging around with Scott Pazner now a little bit more?
Only when I visit East Brunswick.
Okay. Just, Scott Pazner is the principal of a school in North Brunswick where my husband works, and he just resigned because he moved to East Brunswick. And it seems like East Brunswick's mentioned a lot tonight because my daughter moves to East Brunswick in August, but I wanted to thank you for your time. The 1:00 meetings, when I first got on the board, my husband asked me, where were you? I said, do you want proof from the superintendent that I was at that meeting, or do you think I was out at one of the bars in North Brunswick? So I mean, it is tough. All of you spend a lot of time at meetings, and it's great that your procedure tonight, Ms. Gerbi, was to answer the questions, because I've been here before where people had asked questions and they weren't answered, and I think it's great that you did that. And the other, and Mrs. Ratner, thank you very much for your statement too. I said you were spot on. I just have a question about the new Director of Security. You mentioned that he was going to be stationed at your board office. Is, you didn't say too much about his duties. Is he going to be in charge of the RPOs and all the schools and all the people that are assigned to security?
Do you have other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Let me clarify that because I'm sure it's going to be written. He is going to be stationed in each one of the eight schools. When he needs a home base for whatever that reason might be, like Mr. Piro had in the past, he will not be having an office at the high school, which Mr. Piro did have at the high school. So he will be in charge of all security officers. He'll be in charge of all schedules. He will be complying with all state requirements regarding any certifications and any training. He will also be in charge of making sure all appropriate required state trainings occur for, with, within all of the schools with all of the employees.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Hi, Steve Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. Paul, I'm here today, I, I want to thank you, congratulate you, and thank you really for all your years of service. Don't look so humble, you deserve it. You deserve it. It was a pleasure working with you. You care about all the kids, not just Jamesburg or Monroe. You, you are here for the students, and, and I think of what I heard today, everybody realizes that. So I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Elizabeth Hans, I'm still living where I left, where I lived an hour ago, 712A Sussex Way in Rossmore. Just a couple of points. First of all, I want to congratulate this board on making an excellent decision about the Director of Security. I knew Ed Selby years ago, and I look forward to renewing my acquaintance with him. Okay, he's an excellent choice, and I congratulate you on making that decision. Just a couple of things, and it's just, again, I keep saying, I have no skin in this game. All right? And so my only concern is that of a, of a concerned citizen. And so I am upset when I sit here at these meetings, and I've only attended a few, okay, where it just seems that there is a sense that anyone who offers a differing opinion is being taken as disparaging the board. You're under new leadership now. The board has made their decision. All right? I would just hope that the new tenure of this board would be to accept differing opinions, not as disparagement, not necessarily as conflict, but perhaps you would listen and say, maybe that person has a point. I mean, for instance, you raised the issue of transparency. I would argue that transparency is in the eye of the beholder. You believe as a board that you are transparent. I do not disparage that that's what you believe. I have offered a differing opinion. I question whether you have asked the public if you feel that you are transparent, because I would, I would argue that perhaps you are not. But I agree, this is a new corner that you've turned. It's time to move forward. I would just ask this board that as you proceed, and as people come up and offer an opinion that is perhaps diametrically opposed to yours, that you don't necessarily perceive it as disparagement or, or as, as somebody who is in any way trying to, you know, put you down. That's not the point. You need to accept the fact that there will be opinions different than you, and hopefully even consider that maybe those opinions have merit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Elias of 93 Old Church Road. I have a question for the councilor. Do we, does a superintendent need to have a PhD to serve as a superintendent in the state of New Jersey?
No.
Cool. Congratulations to Superintendent Chanley. I have one more question. With the appointment now of Mr. Selby as the head of security, do we still need to hug our kids tighter this fall? Does the board feel comfortable that our kids are going to make it? That's my last question.
Is that a question?
It was a question, yeah. Do we still have to hug our kids tighter this fall now that Mr. Piro is no longer the head of security and Mr. Selby has been appointed the replacement?
Speaking as a mother who is the current superintendent, I think we should hug our kids that hard every single day just because we're fortunate enough to be their parents.
Thank you for that, Superintendent. Congratulations to you, Mr. Ruski, on your retirement. Thank you for your service. I do believe that Jamesburg and Monroe Township should be better integrated, and I know that you've worked very hard to do that. So thank you. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Sarah Aziz, 3 LaSla Drive. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Ruski on his retirement of the board, and thank him so much for his years of service. At the last board meeting, I asked the board why the June 10 biweekly update to Kyle Anderson about the superintendent search included the claim that board member Katie Fabiano was too conflicted to participate in the superintendent search because her husband, Brian Fabiano, is a vocal critic of Ms. Chanley. I asked why this letter included a defamatory remarks about Mr. Fabiano, who is a private citizen. In response, school attorney Vito Gagliardi claimed he couldn't recall the inflammatory language about Mr. Fabiano in spite of the fact that he must have approved this letter just a few days prior to the meeting. Mr. Gagliardi also claimed that the legal opinion, which stated that Ms. Fabiano was conflicted, came from New Jersey School Boards Association. However, when a community member requested this advisory opinion from New Jersey School Boards Association in an Oprah request, the NJ SBA stated that it had no record of any such opinion. The NJ SBA didn't say they had an advisory opinion but that it was protected under attorney-client privilege. They stated they had no record of this opinion at all, which Mr. Gagliardi used to justify the language in the June 10 letter to Kyle Anderson. the language in the June 10 letter to Kyle Anderson. This suggests that the legal opinion, which excluded Katie Fabiano from the superintendent search, did not actually come from the NJ SBA, but came from Mr. Gagliardi himself. This raises the question as to why Mr. Gagliardi issued a legal opinion on Katie Fabiano when a recent lawsuit alleged that other members of the board, Chrissy Skirby, Adina Kotinsky, Ken Chiarella, and Karen Berman, had conflicts of interest. When this lawsuit was filed, Mr. Gagliardi claimed that it was frivolous and predicted that it would be dismissed. However, on June 18, the judge refused to dismiss the lawsuit. Clearly, the judge believes that these allegations have merit. The behavior of Mr. Gagliardi raises concerns as to whether he's functioning as an attorney that represents the full board or whether he's functioning as a quasi personal attorney for the board president, Chrissy Skirby. There's no other explanation as to why this law firm did not seek legal opinions regarding the conflicts of other board members, but singled out Katie Fabiano because of her husband's vocal opposition to the choice of Cherry Shanley as permanent superintendent.
Mr. Gagliardi, can you please shed some light on this?
I don't know if there's a law school that'll give you legal credit for helping me correct you every time you come up here with your legal opinions.
Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure you cited the New Jersey School Boards Association. Am I not right? Because I watched the tape.
No, 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 no.
All right. So then where was the legal opinion coming from?
Excuse me, Mrs. Aziz.
Ma'am, you asked a question. I'm going to do my best to answer it.
Sure.
So first of all, New Jersey School Boards doesn't issue advisory opinions. So of course, when you ask them for something they don't do, they're not going to have it. New Jersey School Boards made its proclamation in connection with who should be participating in the superintendent interviews. I wasn't there. I had nothing to do with it. That was a decision made by New Jersey School Boards. They don't issue advisory opinions. They understood what the facts were, and they advised the board accordingly, and Mrs. Fabiano was not forced to step aside. She took the advice she was given from New Jersey School Boards. My advice was also sought, and she made a decision. So she was not forced to do anything. At this point, however, in connection with the litigation that you've described only in part, Brian Fabiano submitted a statement in support of the plaintiff who was seeking to set aside the contract awarded for Mrs. Shanley. So to the extent it wasn't clear before, I think it's absolutely clear now that her husband has taken a position, which he has every right to take, by the way, but it creates a question in the minds of the public as to whether she can act independently. This is not in any way, shape, or form an indictment of either one of the Fabianos, both of whom are absolutely entitled to their opinions. It's simply a matter of whether or not she is allowed to continue when her husband has taken an active role in trying to prevent her from continuing her contract. That's all. As far as the status of that lawsuit which you continue to raise, it is amazing to me how a lawsuit could be filed, seeking relief, set aside her contract, overturn the suspension of an employee. Those applications are defeated, and the lawsuit is described as a victory for the plaintiff, which I promise you it is not. Finally, since I argued the case, I can't pretend to tell you precisely what the judge was thinking. All I can tell you was it was in his opinion. So I think it would be a mistake for you or any member of the public to assume that you could read the mind of the assignment judge. We take a look at his rulings, and we describe them for the public. That's what I've done.
Well, you said the New Jersey School Boards, they proclaim that Ms. Fabiano was conflicted. Where is the evidence of this proclamation? If it's not an advisory opinion, where is there any written record of it?
They don't issue advisory opinions or make proclamations.
But where's this proclamation? There was no proclamation.
I've nothing further to say here.
Okay, and and then also, why didn't you seek, why wasn't a legal opinion sought about the the four members of the board that were named in the lawsuit?
Legal opinion sought from whom?
For the four members that were named in the lawsuit due to alleged conflicts of interest.
No, I understand what you're saying. You said, why wasn't a legal opinion sought? Sought from whom?
From, I mean, do you represent the whole board? I mean, are you are you only, I mean, I just I just feel like Katie Fabiano was singled out. And there's, you know, and and there's been ethics complaints against another board member that was referred to the Office of Administrative Law for probable cause. So why wasn't a legal opinion sought on that?
Okay, it's not referred to the Office of Administrative Law for probable cause? There's that's just not the process at all?
It happened in on July 27, 2021.
No, that's not what happened. I I it is unrewarding.
So are you saying that there was no ethics complaint that got referred to the Office of Administrative Law in July?
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. You don't cross examine people for a living. I do, so let's not confuse our roles here, okay? What I'm explaining to you is that the Office of Administrative Law doesn't get referred for probable cause. There's no such thing, and the public does not want to hear me educate you on legal procedure. As far as whether or not legal opinions were sought, Mrs. Fabiano sought advice. She was directed and required to do nothing. She chose a path, and I do not think it's appropriate to continue to discuss this woman who is serving for free on this Board of Education when she's not even here. So I'm not going to discuss Mrs. Fabiano anymore. As far as the other board members are concerned, if you're asking me, was I asked to give a legal opinion on whether having a picture together on Facebook renders people legally impermissible to act as a member of a public body? I wasn't asked that opinion, but if I were, I would say that is an extraordinarily flimsy piece of evidence to take public officials and tell them that they can't act. So no one asked for that opinion, but if you're asking me to react to it based upon what was set forth in that lawsuit, I said everything I need to say in those filings, and I know you are intimately familiar with them.
Well, there's there's much more evidence than that one picture that you're referring to that was submitted to the judge. Clearly, if it was just a matter of a single picture, you know, he probably wouldn't have denied the motion to dismiss.
Last piece of legal theater for tonight. There was no evidence presented to the judge in that regard. There's a whole lot of conjecture and information and belief, which is not a basis for seeking injunctive relief as we set forth in the papers and as the judge found. So innuendo, invective, that's not evidence, not where I come from.
So you know, you don't have any idea why the judge denied the motion to dismiss?
Because our arguments were successful, that's why.
That your your motion was denied by the judge.
Ma'am, our motion said that those things did not belong in Superior Court. They belonged before the School Ethics Commission and Commissioner of Education, and that's where they went. Our opposition to the application of the plaintiffs to overturn what the board did was successful, and we know it was successful because Mrs. Shanley's contract wasn't torn up and the suspended employee wasn't returned. I have nothing further to say here, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you.
We look forward to your interpretation of the facts.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Andy Polori, 16, St. James Street. I came here only for one reason, but after hearing some of the commentary, first, I want to say that not everything on Facebook is accurate, and more importantly, I do agree with the board president's assertion that any commentary about the safety of kids is off limits. I think I can speak for anybody in this room that if such an incident ever happens in any of our school system, every one of us will be there to protect our kids without a doubt. So first and foremost. So I agree with you, the newly selected superintendent, that hug each and every kid as hard as you can every single day, as long as you have the opportunity. Member Katie, Kate Ratner, your summary doing the other board business is excellent. We need to focus on kids. I completely agree with that. Michelle Arminio, three years we worked on the same board. I doubt a tremendous amount of respect for you and the way you think about things and the way you question. I admire your courage to vote no today. Thank you very much. Paul, I know we had a long discussions. I came here only for you today, and after 1 o'clock, 1:30, when we go home, could not sleep, which I'm sure some of the board members still feel, we do pick up the phone and calm each other down. I want to thank you personally for doing that because I walked out of these board meetings with my heartbeat at 141 at times because you are intimidated, you're bullied, and you're given gestures to intimidate you. Through all of that, you've been a calming voice for me personally. And on behalf of my family and friends of Monroe Township Board of Education, I want to thank you for your service. I wish you nothing but the best moving forward. I'm sure you're going to do well, and I completely agree that whoever is going to be replacing you has the same courage and the grace that you exhibited under very hard circumstances. And I noticed also that the new principal who came on, she left a couple of minutes ago, she came with three of her kids to the meeting. That shows what it takes for somebody to be dedicated. That's what I call as a dedicated employee. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Our next item is our closed session resolution. We resolve the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following matters. Matters protected by attorney client privilege, personnel matters. Following closed section, following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such a time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Oh, okay. That's right, we need to appoint a temporary board secretary. I move to appoint Mr. Spearman. All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Nope? Okay, great. Thank you. We'll be in closed session. It probably should only take, I would guess, maybe a half an hour, and then we'll be back out. Okay, we are back from closed session. We're now in the public. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for closed session items. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is August 17, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the last motion, if I may.
Yes.
Somebody's got a second, but that's the last motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Ruski, seconded by Mr. Chiarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and good luck, Mr. Ruski.